Savage is joining us online as he has work commitments outside of the city tonight. We appreciate him joining online. We'll begin this meeting with an invocation by Seth Savage. And not Seth Savage.
No.
And we will then have a pledge of allegiance led by Lee Spingham. And we'll move forward from that point.
Our Father in heaven, we come before the at the beginning of this council meeting with gratitude in our hearts for the opportunity we have to come together as representatives, administration and residents of Syracuse. To discuss the affairs of the city, the processes and and. We ask the heavenly father to guide us and inspire us to make good decisions, to look out for the current and future needs of our citizens. We are grateful for the moisture we've received lately, and we ask thee to continue to bless us with with rain, to fill our reservoirs and to support our communities. Heavenly father, we are grateful for all that thou has done for us, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. As we begin our meeting tonight, we start with a truth and taxation hearing. The truth and taxation hearing is a part of Utah law that if we are. If you pay even a dollar more than you paid last year, we're required by law to hold this hearing and talk about what it is that changed in your city budget. We're going to do that in depth. I want to talk a little bit about the budget process so that you understand where we are tonight. The budget is not adopted. We have. Have a preliminary budget adopted that began on July thirty or July thirty first or July first. So. At that point in time, we operate preliminary on the expenses that have been carried over, but these future expenses are not official until there is a vote tonight. We begin our budget sessions early in the year. It takes several months for us to do this. We meet as a council to discuss all of the needs of the city and all of the things that have changed between years. So for that matter, we have been discussing this. Now that is recorded online. It's broadcast publicly. It's also recorded on our YouTube channel. If you want to hear any of the discussion that went into making and creating the budget that we began with, all of that's recorded. It's it's a day long session that we. Enter into. So it is a long recording, but it's there if you want to search through that. After that point in time, every meeting that we've held, we've held a we've added this item to the agenda so that it can be discussed at any point in time. But you need to understand a couple of things because I there's one thing that I I have received an awful lot of calls over the budget, and I welcome those calls. I'm happy to talk to people about what's being suggested, about what's in the budget. But one thing that I do need to clear up is I've been told by many people to veto the budget. I don't have that power. At this point, after we set the preliminary budget, it takes three council members to add something, and it takes three council members to pull something out of the budget. I don't have that power, so I can't veto the budget. We're going to begin tonight with a presentation from our city manager that discusses all of the key points of what has changed financially in the city. That led us to this budget document tonight. After that point, we will open the public hearing, which is your opportunity to talk to council. This is unlike a typical public hearing in that when we have a public or when we have public comment for. City meetings, if you bring up a new topic, something that we have not talked about before, we cannot answer your questions because it's not an advertised subject. Tonight for the public hearing on the budget, it is advertised. So this is one of the rare occasions when you can ask a question about the budget and we can actually answer that. Any of the council members or the city staff can answer the question. We may arrive at a point where we have to agree to disagree if. Because we will have to move forward, but you can ask a question tonight, which is unusual for a public hearing. So I want to make that clear. To begin with, I will now do as I said, I'll turn this over to Brody Bavero. He's our city manager. He's going to discuss what the changes are. This will be very hopefully informative to those who are unfamiliar with our budget process. But at least you know where to base some of the information on.
Okay, how are we doing? Yes, I get the 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 wonderful assignment of getting in front of people and talking about taxes. And specifically the fact that taxes go up. And so. I wanted to, first of all, I think it's important before we have the actual public hearing to make sure we have a common understanding of what's actually being proposed tonight. How property taxes actually work in the state of Utah? Because we hear things online or we read things online and people come in with different. Understandings of of how this all works. So I want to first establish kind of how it works, what it is, and what's actually being proposed. We start off with a mission statement. This is not just some statement that we have on the wall. This is something that actually drives all of our decisions. It drives our budgeting decisions, our strategic planning and that sort of thing. What I want to focus on in this presentation, there are two key words in our mission statement that come into play during the truth in taxation specifically. And those are in that first that first part of it that we aim to to provide quality, affordable services. And that's the constant balance that that your elected officials have. Everybody demands services from the city. We provide a lot of services out there. They also demand that be affordable. And so balancing the quality of those services with the affordability is a is a constant battle. So. We'll talk about that. I want to I want to key in on a couple of things first, just so you're aware. Syracuse City has received a national certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting 12 years straight now. This is something that we take pride in, and it's a testament to the transparency that Syracuse City has in its financial information. It's all available online. The financial story of the city is available for anybody to scrutinize. We we take pride in that. We want to make sure that your money is it can be looked at. You can see where it's going. And we can be accountable to it. And so that's something that we're proud of and want to make sure that you're aware that that is available for you. So let's start off a little bit about revenue. So tonight we are only talking about property taxes and the tax rate. However, it is important to know that Syracuse City has multiple revenues. And some of these revenues are earmarked to where we we can only spend them on certain things and nothing else. And that's regulated by state law. Other revenues, the council has broad discretion on what to use it for. What we're talking about tonight is the general fund. That's the least restrictive fund the the council can use. It funds most of our general operations, our police, fire. Community economic development, park and rec, administration, all kinds, almost all the departments. Are mostly funded through the general fund. The property tax revenue that the city receives is only about 15% of the entire revenue stream. The the lion's share for Syracuse City anyway is sales tax and charges for services. Charges for services are things like building permits, park and rec program, you know, registration fees when you sign up for Little League. Those kinds of of services that we provide only when you're using that service. I I don't know if we can. I can. I can kind of play with that a little bit. Does that work? We also receive a lot of grants. I'll talk a little bit about that later, but. One thing, one thing that's important to know is that when we talk about, and I'm I'm going to have to shrink this a little bit to go over here. Let's see. How's that? Okay, so in our advertisement, in our property tax bill, it says 33%, right? So there's a 33% proposed increase in in the tax, the property tax. And what's important to know, if if we're concerned about our own property taxes. That's the number that is just for the city portion. Okay, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. If we're concerned about, you know, government spending. That 33% in property taxes is about 5% in our total revenue. So the 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 revenue, the additional revenue that would be generated. By the proposed tax increase would be about a 5% increase to our revenue stream. And that's less than inflation this last year. And so there's on on the whole, the request from property taxes. Is fairly modest, even though it's 33% of the property tax. So that's something that you always have to make sure you're aware of when you're talking about percentages. Okay, so let's get into. Kind of kind of where a lot of that money goes. Municipalities are largely service organizations, just like a company, right? If you're a service company, most of that goes to people. The services that Syracuse City provides in any city, it largely takes human beings to provide those services. And so the majority of that goes to payroll and benefits. There are other operating expenses like equipment or tools and uniforms and, you know, supplies and things like that. Capital expenses are included in that, and we have some debt service on some buildings that we have. So when we talk about going back to the mission statement, we're talking about quality service that requires quality people. Okay, so the mayor mentioned a little bit about, you know, property taxes and how they work in in Utah. I'm going to go through here and explain kind of how this works because it's it's probably different than what many of you assume. So let's just say in this example that all of the property taxes generate $3 million for the city. Okay, so every year the city would get would get $3 million out of property taxes. If those. If property values were to go up, which they have. Then by default, if this council does nothing, the property tax rate automatically goes down. So that the city still only gets $3 million. Okay? And that's the way the state property tax works. It's based on the net. Generation of of dollars, not the rate. So the rate fluctuates every year, no matter what. It's based on how much is actually produced. And vice versa, if we were to have a situation where our property values were going down. Our tax rate would automatically go up, even if the council didn't do anything. It would just automatically the the rate would go up so that the city would still have the $3 million. So that's important to know. Now that's that's looking at on a citywide basis. Now your property may be. The property might actually be going the value, your value might be going up faster than the average of the city. So you might actually pay more. You know, even if the tax rate goes down. But if 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 your property is going up about the same as the average of the whole city. Then the tax rate would drop and you would pay the same as you did last year. All things, you know, holding equal. So that's kind of how property taxes in general work. Now. There's some, there's some issues with that that the city has, and this is a problem that all city councils throughout the whole state deal with every year. We've got inflation and this year especially, we all know what what's going on with inflation, but in any year it it holds the same. So it makes it so the city has fewer resources or purchasing power to actually provide services to you. So as an example, 10 years ago in 2012, if a property generated $1,000 in in property tax. And we and the council did nothing with the property rate. That same property in the year 2022 would still generate $1,000. Well, as as you know, $1,000 in the year 2022 does not give you the same service as $1,000 in the year 2012. And so the city, by default, if it does nothing, cannot provide the same services that it did previously. Because of the way the tax, the property tax works. So you might say, well, what about all this growth? I mean, the city's growing like crazy, right? What about all that revenue? And that's a good question. However, that that growth demands its own services. And so we we tend to think that all that growth should pay for the services that we get as residents. And but that that new growth actually needs to pay for itself. And so in that inflation just eats away at what can be provided to us. And. So that new growth is really not intended to offset the inflationary damage to existing residents. So let's let's go back to that tax bill for a second. And I'll try to zoom this this in a little bit. So the average, the average home value assessed value is about $535,000 in Syracuse City. When when you get a tax notice and it says 33%, that's not 33% of your entire bill. Okay, so if if you came in here tonight, you know, and your whole, your whole tax bill is, you know, 2,500 bucks, it's not 33% of 2,500 bucks. It's 33% of of the city's portion. So the average, the average city property tax is about $372. And per year. The lion's share of your property tax goes to the school district, and that's the red. The red part of the pie there. It's about 65% of of your property taxes go to the school district. The city is the next largest at 13%. So so 13% of your bill actually goes to the city. We don't see any of the rest of your bill. That goes to all the other entities, and we have no control over those. So. So the the 33% that you saw in the notice is the 33% of that, you know, $372. Yours might be different depending on the assessed value of your home, but that's the average. Okay, by way of comparison, you know, as 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 Americans, we're we're. Really good at not not paying taxes, at not liking to pay taxes. We're also really good at being good consumers. You know, we we understand the value for our dollar. And the city and a lot of what the city does is not totally different from what any other company does as far as providing services. So. You know, you pay something and you get a service in or or you purchase a product in return. As we look at some of the other ubiquitous things that we have, you know, almost everybody has a cell phone. Right now, the average annual cell phone bill is about 1,368 per year. That's what we pay for to have our cell phones. Another another common thing in almost every household is like a cable and internet bill. And the average is about 1,141 for cable and internet. And we get a service for that. We pay that bill and we get a service in return, right? And one that's that's becoming more and more common are streaming services, things like Netflix, Hulu, Disney Plus, those kinds of things. The average household pays about $660 per year for those for those streaming services. To put that in comparison, the average city tax is $372. And the point here is what services do you get? Right? You get parks, park, park maintenance. You get 24/7 police service. You get 24/7 fire and EMS service. You get road maintenance and sidewalk repair. Things like that. And so if we look at it as a consumer and we say, okay, well, what am I getting for my dollars? I think there's a there's a strong argument that it's it's pretty good value. And so. That's something to just be aware of that, you know, in all the things that we pay money for, if we were to treat this like any other service, I know it's not. It's it's a it's a required payment. It's a tax. But if we were to treat it like, like what am I getting for it? It's pretty good value. Okay? So what is the actual proposal tonight? Like I said, without any action, the tax rate would drop from .001653 to .001265. The proposal is to adjust it up to .001689. So like I said, because property values have gone up, that rate's dropping. And and the council is just bringing it back up to a little bit above where it was. And and the reason it says, you know, 33% is because it's 33% from that low number that it would have dropped to. I think it's about maybe just under 3% from the current rate. What would that do? It would generate about 1.1 million dollars, 1.2 million dollars. That's about $124 per year. Or $10.40 per month on the average residence in Syracuse City. Okay? Well, what's that for? What's it going for? Okay, well, we there has been, as mentioned earlier, there's been a lot of discussion on the budget and, you know, where this would go. The priority direction for this new revenue, first of all, about a third of it was already discussed last year at this time. When the cities, all the cities in Davis County took over paramedic service from Davis County, there was an associated tax with that. This council decided to cut it in half. So so half of it was done was half of the increase was done last year and half of it would be this year. So a third of it was pretty much already committed last year that and we discussed it in a hearing just like this and had a debate. Over it with the council. And so this is just the second half of that plan. Okay? About 145,000 for two park maintenance workers. Keep in mind that these numbers, they include. All salary benefits, you know, insurance. You know, FICA tax, all those, all those things included. Retirement, all those things. So 145,000, that would be two additional park maintenance workers. 127,000 for a police officer, three, which is your most experienced frontline police officer. We have added and found money in the existing budget for a second officer. That was approved July 1. So we we did, we did trim some things in the budget to add that that other officer in there. 98,000 for public information specialist. A lot of the cities, this is becoming a critical position in making sure people have accurate information out there and knowing what their city is doing. 88,000 for an HR specialist. As our city continues to grow, there's additional demands on our HR staff. We have two right now. 81,000 for facility maintenance tech. We have a combination, a dynamic here, a combination of city buildings getting older, requiring more maintenance. And we're adding a park maintenance facility which was paid for with cash, no debt. And that will be coming online in the next year. 18,000 for a public works inspector. Now, why is that so low? It's because some of that per that that position salary is paid for through utility bills. This is the portion that would come through the general fund. And then about 184,000 to put towards vehicles. For, you know, not all of these positions need a vehicle, but some of them do. So we have to purchase the the vehicle. We we did include, well, let's put this. So these are the various areas. Of the proposal of where those positions would go. To put that in a monthly perspective, like if you were to get a receipt. You know, monthly bill, if you will, for this. These are the the dollar amounts for each of those. So it'd be a $3.92 for for the paramedics. A buck 15 for the park maintenance, a buck 12 for the police officer. You know, 70 to 86 cents for for the information specialist, HR specialist and facility maintenance tech. 16 cents for the inspector and about a buck, buck 05 for the vehicles. Okay? A lot of times we budget monthly, so sometimes it's it's kind of more digestible to kind of understand like what it is that that we're we're going to have to pay as residents here. So there are things, you know, that that are not being addressed. You know, we're not just, you know. The council is not just like coming up with things to spend money on and asking residents to pay for it. They've prioritized, they've gone through a whole, you know, strategic planning retreat on what the priorities are. And there are some things that, you know, we're just not going to be able to fully address with with this proposal. There are some ongoing needs. For example, the new on-ramp for West Davis Quarter at Antelope Drive. You know, that's going to be the the front door to the city. And what do we want that front door to look like? You know, we we do have some money from UDOT to put towards landscaping to kind of dress it up and make it look presentable. But right now that we don't have, we haven't put any city money into that yet. Park development. There's several projects that we do have money for. We have a five-year plan for for park improvement projects. But there's several items on the list that just won't be funded because of the the limited resources. Buying land for future parks. Our city is growing. We have growing demands for park and rec space. Right now, we're at about 15 acres and growing short. In actual parkland needed according to our parks master plan. And so, you know, that's not going to be coming online anytime soon. We've got, we are making a lot of good progress in street paving, and we have for the last several years. But we could, and we do have needs to even amp that up even more. And we could do that, but I, you know, we're we're gonna, we're gonna be fine with the progress that we are making. And finally, a full traffic unit. As this highway comes online. There will be a demand from Syracuse City to have a full traffic unit, traffic safety unit from our police department. Will we handle an accidents on the highway? And accidents, you know, there'll be more accidents probably just from the traffic flow. And so the those demands will be higher. Eventually, we will get these things and and but, you know, we have to, we have to make decisions, the council. They have to make decisions on what we're going to do now and what we're going to do later, just like everybody else, right? Okay, so may I ask, well. There's a lot of information out here on this and and people have, you know, friends or relatives in other cities and they say, well, you know, my taxes are a lot lower for my city and or mine are higher. This might be a little hard to see, but but the point is. The Syracuse, so these are, these are all the cities in Davis County. the Syracuse, so these are, these are all the cities in Davis County is a list of them. And it's and it's ranked on what the resident is actually taxed for municipal services. And and so it's ranked in highest to lowest. Right now Syracuse for property tax is about right in the middle for Davis County. The blue, the blue line is the actual city tax rate. So you can see that actually some some cities have a lower tax rate than us, but their residents pay more in taxes. And so and you might ask, well, how is that? Well, then you have to look at the green. That green is a special service district that serves those residents. For example, Clearfield, West Point, they don't have a fire department. Their fire service is provided by North Davis Sewer District. North, North. I just, yeah, did I say police? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I knew that. So fire, so sorry. North Davis Fire District is a taxing entity. And they tax their residents for that service. And it's a it's a service that Syracuse City gets from our own city. And it's just included in our city tax and they pay a separate tax. So the the resident actually pays more in taxes for the same services. And that's why, you know, you see some of those cities that are higher than us like, you know, Sunset or West Point or, you know, even Clearfield. They have a lower city tax rate, but they their residents have to pay that North Davis Sewer District, North Davis Fire District tax rate. Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of a lot of services out here. So so they have to pay that that tax rate as well. And that's why their residents actually pay more than 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 Syracuse City. And then there's 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 cities that have lower taxes. Okay. What you see in red are the cities that currently have proposals for tax increases. So it's it's kind of if if their proposed tax increases go forward, then what you see there in the red is the is what the next year would look like. Okay. So that's that. All right. So with these additional, with this additional staff, a lot of times that's that's a lot of additional costs that we have to pay. But one thing that it's certainly been a priority priority for this mayor and council is to look for grants. So when we have adequate staffing, we have the ability to go seek out outside money, which I know government grants are still, you know, tat, you know, funded through tax dollars. But it but it helps to lighten the load for our residents if we obtain grant money. So in the last five years, our city has secured about $23 million in grants. And that is only made possible through the adequate staffing of the city. These grants take a lot of time, not just to like put together and try to apply for and get, but it's a lot of the administration after the grant that that takes place. We've had road projects. We have victim and victim advocate service, which is a great service for people who are victim of crimes. We have a dedicated person, mostly was it 80% funded through grant, something like that, 70, 80% funded through grant to help help those victims out. We recently got a grant to help upgrade our emergency operations center. So things like that are really benefits to to our city, our residents at no additional tax cost to our residents. So we go back to balancing quality of service with affordability. We talked about our our financial reporting. We recently got upgraded to a fire rating ISO fire rating of three. That's in the top 15% in Utah. That's a that's a rating that basically essentially kind of like an insurance rating that says your city can can put out a fire quickly if needed and save property damage or life damage or, you know, loss of life. Top 15% in the state. We also have, Steve puts together a it's called a citizen centric report. It's a financial report that is boiled down to the basic understanding. It's like if you just want to read the the four-page summary of our finances instead of the whole, you know, financial report. We've got awards for doing that well. Money Magazine Syracuse City ranked number six on best places to live in America 2021. We've got ratings from Neighborhood Scout as one of the safest cities in America. These are all, these are all not just things that, you know, we, the city employees and the elected officials do. This is us. This is us as a community. Ranked number one by Nerd Wallet as the number one best small city in the West for families. We get excellent ratings with niche.com and then 2017, 18, 19, 20 and 21, we've been in the top 10 safest cities in the state. So quality, quality of life here is really good. Speaking on affordability, I'll zoom in here because this is kind of like the main point. So Utah Taxpayers Association, it is the your tax watchdog. Right? They scrutinize governments in Utah. They scrutinize city governments, they scrutinize the state, special service districts. And and kind of say, okay, are you prudent with your with your residents' tax dollars? Syracuse City, this is the latest report from them. The best five city governments for revenue per capita Syracuse is number two out of 200 200 out of 250 cities in Utah in in terms of revenue per capita. So what this is saying basically is Syracuse City generates $427 per person. And that is the second lowest in the state. The average city in Utah collects about $668 per person. In terms of affordability, they they also rank that. This is based on our citizens' income. So the amount of revenue that your city uses per thousand dollars of income, Syracuse is the fifth lowest in the state. And so in terms of of taxes, I think, you know, as Americans, you know, there there's a few things more American than hating taxes, right? You know, maybe baseball, I don't know. But I think I think that's fine. And I think it's fine to during the hearing, it's fine to be angry about half of who pay taxes. I think it's it's fine to be upset that they're going up or maybe going up, they may not. But to say that Syracuse City is not being prudent is is a tough argument. You know, being one of the lowest revenue generators in the state. And we pride ourselves on that. And that's, we try to be different than your typical government. And that's, that's what we we try to do here and take care of the money that we receive. And we we take it very seriously. So with that, I I'll turn the time back over to the mayor. And, you know, staff will be here to help, you know, if the mayor and council want us to answer any questions for you. We'd be happy to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brody. Okay, I do want to address a couple of points that have been questions that have been posed to me during this lead up to this hearing. And a couple of things that you need to understand. Number one, most of the programs in the city that would be considered not for everybody are things that are kind of a pay as you go fee. For example, our rec programs. When I started here years ago, they were subsidized by your tax dollars. We taxed or we tasked the recreation department to make sure that every program paid for itself with the fees that we charge. So our Little League and our soccer and all those, they pay for the rec services by themselves. So if you're not in it, you're not the one playing soccer, you're not paying for it. And I'm very proud of them for making that adjustment because it's helped benefit our city a lot. The same thing goes for our utilities. We have, our utilities are a based on the actual cost. This is a choice that government makes to say we are, because the government allows for us to make a small percentage for future growth. Instead, we choose to be a break even fee service, which means if we get, if you're paying your water bill, your water bill is based on the actual cost of what it gets of what we get to deliver water. And that's it. That's the only cost of it. Now, that does cause some anguish because your water bill will continually go up because the water supplier to the city charges us more every year. So if they say per gallon, they're going to charge us 35 cents more because we're a break even service, we have to raise the bill 35 cents. Now, I want to talk about what that does if we don't do that because there was a time in the city after the last recession when they chose to subsidize fees with rainy day funds. And then what that means is that the money that's set aside for infrastructure upkeep is not there when we need it. For example, we recently had to upgrade our city water tower. This was a need that was anticipated 20 years ago. But because we robbed that fee for several years, we didn't have that money. We had to actually bond for a water tower. So we could have had money to put towards that, but we didn't. This also means that if we fall behind on upgrading our roads, which what I began here a few years ago on council, we were not in a good place with our roads, but we now are catching up on our plan. It went from a 10-year catch-up plan to now we're at about, we have a five-year active plan, but we're not that far behind. We're not five years behind. We just have a revolving plan on keeping our roads up. But it is an actual cost of keeping the roads so that we don't have to tear the whole thing down. We had roads in the city that hadn't been touched in 40 years. They had to be torn down to the road base and restored. We actually went and got grants for some of that, so it wasn't all our money. But again, the fees are in line with just upkeeping the service. It's not about, there's no profit involved in these things. Some of the things that have changed in the city that we do not control, I want to mention. For example, the city raised the state retirement requirements for many of the programs. I we have no choice that the city or the state has said, if this is your program that we have to pay into, it has to be paid into. So those are fees that are out of the control of this council. There are things that were mandated that we have to take care of by the state law. We have no choice. That that is a mandate that came without funding, so we have to pay for those things. We have done well to go out and seek grants, especially recently, to go out and find money that can be applied towards certain services. Grants are very particular in that they always are earmarked for one specific thing. I don't feel bad about getting, while it is tax dollars, the way that I look at this is we're returning it to use for you. For example, we got a federal grant last week. Robert and I went down to Salt Lake and for a grant we'd applied for, we were awarded some money that will go towards the mandate that we have to fund for water metering. This is federal money, but if we don't apply for it and get it, yes, it's your tax dollars, but if we don't use it here, it will just be used somewhere else. So I'm kind of restoring and trying to make sure that it affects your life by getting those grants here. Road grants, if we get those, it affects your roads and not paying for somebody in Detroit or Chicago and their roads. So yes, we're active in trying to get that money. Yes, it is tax dollars from somewhere else. We're trying to make sure that it does good to you who paid that money. So those are just a couple of points I wanted to to make about how we go about this budgeting. We are a break even on services philosophy. We are not a money-making organization. Some people have said, oh, well, go write more tickets. We are not making money. And that doesn't pay for, you know, any particular thing. We don't have a mandate to go and try and find money in sources like that. So with that in mind, the next phase here is that we will open this to a public hearing. A few ground rules is this is a civic public forum. So there will be no personal attacks. You you have to be civil and maintain some level of decorum here. As I said earlier, this is one of the few times when because of the way this is advertised to talk about taxes, you can actually ask a question. If you ask a question, I will either direct staff to enter or we can, as a council, council is free to answer your questions as they understand it. Again, tonight, after this year, after your public input, the council will be voting on a budget. And so it will be majority of your five council members that decide the fate of the budget. That's important to note. So at that point, we did have one public comment written in. I'll have that read to begin the meeting. And I'll have our recorder have that. After that, I will open it up for your time to come to the mic. And you'll get your one opportunity. This isn't where you cycle back through over and over. We're we'll hear from you one time each. You're all welcome to to talk and direct your questions. And we will be here as long as it takes. So I'm not timing this evenings, but we do ask that you get to your point and and move forward in the interest of time this evening. So Cassie, if you would read that.
Yes, this says to Mayor Mon and City Council. Back in February 2022, the museum presented a proposal to the city regarding our goals to expand the main building. While we understand the logistics of this proposal may take longer than we expected, we were shocked to find that the city only gave the museum the usual 500 for the yearly budget. We asked for around 250,000. We did not expect to receive that entire amount or even half, but to receive nothing more than 500 is disappointing. The museum has drastically improved operations, education outreach, miscellaneous programming and updated exhibits. Even during the COVID-19 pandemic, we managed to keep operations and business afloat despite the decrease in visitor attendance and donations. With the addition of hours for our curator, we have many more exciting goals ahead that absolutely require support from the city. Our expansion presentation was well received by the city council. The museum contributes to the good name of Syracuse more than any other city entity through visitors from all over the world, all over the United States and locally. We have many positive reviews from attendees saying the museum was one of their favorite experiences while visiting Utah. A local citizen who visited the museum told us that we were a bright start in the community. With our current volunteers, there are roughly 40 hours a week of volunteer time promoting Syracuse City through the museum. That equates to one full-time employee that the city doesn't have to hire, which gives a positive public relations spin. We were very disappointed that there were no funds available to contribute to our vision of expansion and growth. We appreciate the yearly donation of 500, but by comparison, other city museums' operating budgets are much higher. For example, the city of Leighton gives the Heritage Museum of Leighton 5,000 for operational expenses in addition to the 75,000 from ramp tax funding. We were hoping to get some expansion money from the sale of the city property near the cemetery as even a small percentage of that would help us immensely. We hope you understand our frustrations with this situation. Our curator and volunteers work hard to preserve the history, heritage and culture of life of life along the Great Salt Lake. And we all want to see support from the city that we cherish. It's critical that the city invests in the museum. As we experience rapid growth, we must preserve the history before it's lost and forgotten by future generations. We hope to hear from each of you soon. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, the Syracuse Museum Foundation Board. This is signed by L. Dean Hill, the president, Mike McBride, vice president, Lanny Holbrook, treasurer, Phil Gooch, Mike Gailey, Terry and Diane Palmer, Colleen Thurgood, Corinne Bolduc, Charlotte and Chuck Wright, Stephen Anderson, John Bosworth, Jeannie and Ernie Field, Lynn John, Laurie Nichols, Doug Peterson, Mark Peterson and Lisa Saunders.
Okay. Time will take one at a time. If you want to come up towards the. Time will take one at a time. If you want to come up towards the early chairs, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Tom Park, sixteen fifty eight West, Lowington South. I'd be lying if I say I'm disappointed. As you all know, with the inflation, everyone is getting squeezed. And I don't know about you, but I know a lot of people living in Syracuse are not making six figure incomes. So we're getting squeezed at everything from food to gas to electricity, everything. And no, everyone does not have a telephone bill that's a hundred dollars a month. No, people do not have streaming services. No, people do not have cable all the time. I know many people that do not. I have cut everything from my budget that I can. I cannot afford anything. We've cut food. We've cut gas. We've put our temperature at eighty degrees in our home. We cannot keep this up. We're being killed by a thousand paper cuts. The art of war ensues. I mean, it's got to stop somewhere. Have you ever looked at not funding the parks as much? I know people like their parks, but we've got to cut. What is the proper rule of government? It is not to have parks in every neighborhood. That's why we have our yards. If you look at the, the whole purpose of parks was a socialist agenda to put people in high density housing so they have a general place to play. Most of the people in Syracuse have their lawns. They have their yards. We should not be funding for all these multiple parks. And I think there's tens of thousands of dollars that can be cut in funding for that. You mentioned additional parks that you wanted to do. I don't think that that's necessary. I really don't. Everyone else is tightening their budget and going without. Why can't Syracuse? Yes, for a good friend's fee. No, I do not want to take money from the fire or the police department. But I think we can reduce our spending in the parks. We can reduce spending anywhere we can. But raising the rates on property taxes, even though you think it's only three hundred dollars a year, that's a lot of money to people that are not making six figures, that are struggling paycheck to paycheck to make their bills. And you think it's just an arbitrary thing. Let's just go raise the fee a little bit. Maybe you don't. But that three hundred dollars is killing us. My house of five people, we're barely spending a hundred dollars on food. We're spending five hundred dollars a, a month on gas. We can't keep this pace up. Through the national government, the state government, now our local government, we can't, this is not sustainable. And I leave this with you. Thank you.
I'm Mike McBride, fourteen fifty three Brookshire Drive. My two questions are, I noticed when you were listing the cities and their tax rates, both Leighton and Farmington pay much less in total property tax, and I'd like to know why that is. I have a feeling I know, but I'd like the council to be able to express that. And the other is, when Davis County gave up the EMT, did they reduce the taxes we were paying for that to the, to the county? And did the city go to the county and say, send that money to us? Because I think that's what they should have done. Thank you.
I'll answer your second question and say that, uh, what this county did was discontinue the tax for EMT services, but they then allowed us to take that over. So it's, it's the same amount, or I mean, we still have that money, but it's, uh, they don't give it to us. They stopped that tax. So they, you know, had less that they were accounting for in their tax bill, but they required us to take it on. So that is part of why there was an additional, that was talked about last year. Uh, as far as, um, other city taxes, I, I'm just going to say at this point, it's not fair for us to say why other people have their taxes because that would be speculation. I, I really can't account for, we are, we are not, I couldn't ask staff to be an expert in Leighton's tax or Clearfield's tax, or they're an expert in our tax. So I'm sorry.
But if I had to guess, I would say it was a commercial base issue where they don't have the same requirements of their citizens because they have such a strong commercial base. Farmington Station is a huge contributor. Vountiful has a huge contribution. There are a lot of, a lot of commercial bases that tend to make up for that.
Let's do that here. I, okay, folks, okay. I totally agree with you, but we're going to have to restrict this to comments at the mic. So I, I agree. I would like to increase our, our tax base business. It's something that we are actively working on.
Alan Miller, thirty one eleven South, one thousand West. Want to touch on a couple of things. A couple of years ago, I, I can't remember when, did, we passed a RAP tax. You just a moment ago said we do not pay recreation fees for any recreational programs unless we use it. So that was not entirely true because I pay RAP tax every time.
Let me clarify, the RAP tax is for recreational, uh, that we go towards parks. It can be used yours, or it can be used towards, uh, programs, but it's not. The programs themselves are funded. So what I was referring to is you don't pay for soccer if you're not there. I guess in a roundabout way, we could be buying a soccer field with that money. But again, that was voted on by the people.
I understand that, but I'm still paying that tax for a service I'm not using. Okay. I don't, you know.
All right. I'll accept that as a correction. But we tax, we did task the parks to fund, uh, the recreation programs with the cost of the service fee.
I understand that. And, and we had several programs, you know, tennis earlier this year that was canceled. And, you know, a lot, I know, I have family members who were very disappointed in that. Nonetheless, we are at a point, as was stated before, we're all being pinched by this inflation and everything. We are.
This is not a cheering section. You've got to respect him and give him a chance to talk.
We are pinched by this inflation. We're being pinched by taxes being increased on multiple levels. A thirty three percent increase for someone like my, my mother and father in law on a fixed income is enormous. We, this is, this is not sustainable. For many years, we've been told by city council members here in this building that we need to grow the city. Well, the city's growing. But now you're wanting to raise taxes even more. That was their excuse back then on why they would raise taxes. When does it stop? When do we stop raising the taxes and say, okay, we've got to be more diligent in what we're spending the money on? You know, we have businesses that come in and go faster than any other city that I, I've seen. You know, why, why? Is it city fees? Is it the property owners? What is it? But we've got to figure that out because.
Patriotage. We, we need our people to shop and use the business.
But we gotta, we gotta have the businesses that people want to shop. You know, what, I go all the way down to Clinton, you know, to, because they've got the stores that I want to go to. Those stores should have been here. You, you've got an exit coming in. We knew it was coming for many years for this West Davis corridor. We've got Antelope Island, where the gateway to that island. Why are those businesses not along Antelope Drive? Why did we not do what we needed to do to build that business tax base before this freeway came in, before Clinton City built everything that they built? And now have that business tax base that we should have had. Thank you.
No, sir. This is not a rally.
Good evening, Cody Haymer. Are we supposed to say our address?
Yes.
Okay, twenty one sixty seven West, twenty two hundred South, Syracuse. I just first wanted to say, uh, great presentation, um, and great accolades and awards, which you guys have been doing. I, I think that that's, that's awesome, the rankings. But like everyone says, these are unprecedented, unprecedented times that we're in. Not only an inflation, but we're in a recession. I guess I had a question I would ask is, do you guys know the average wage growth compared to inflation right now? Five percent. Didn't I see a five percent that was up there? A five percent on the tax is what was talked about. Yeah. Um, and then I also saw there was a, I think it was five percent debt that was also in there. So I, I think at this time, it's something that has to be considered, as everyone has said, that everyone else is cutting back. Everyone else is, is suffering. And it, I fear it only is going to get worse with what I call a more inflation act is just going to get passed. Next year, it's going to go in higher because we're putting more money out in the economy. And it's going to raise it even higher. Um, this, these are just dire times. So I get it. The city's, you know, trying to beautify it and make it a great place to live. But right now, we're just needing to see people survive. And, and then that needs to be considered in the hearts of, of when you're making these decisions right now. I, I'm all for about continuing regular times, um, to, to pay taxes. And, and, and so I guess like, before saying that we hate taxes, I, I can't speak for everybody. I, I'm military. I've gone on multiple deployments. And I love this country and, and, and to protect the freedoms. And I'm fine with paying taxes. But I think you have to understand the situation that's going on. And, and it just can't be put, keep pushing down to everybody else. I could tell you a list of projects I have in my house, a, a window for my, my kid breaking that I can't fix right now, right? I mean, to, to a door, sliding door, I got to get fixed, like a whole bunch of list of projects. And so it's nice to have the convenience, but I think it's more important to, to keep the necessity stuff, fire, police, and what we can to get through this together as a city. Because otherwise, I just think it's just going to get worse for our city. It, it's not going to, going to beautify or anything. I feel like the recession is going to get worse and the inflation is going to get worse. Thank you.
Judy Maservi, sixteen forty seven West, fifteen hundred South. I've lived here since two thousand and one. Brody, I want to thank you for your report. It was a really good report, very enlightening. I do want to say a few things. Reason why you don't, I'm sure you guys know, increased taxes during inflationary times is because you kill growth. And so I appreciate Brody's report because he talked about, sorry, he talked about how you get twenty seven percent of your revenue from people buying things here. And so you start killing that growth, you're just going to kill it on the other side. And also, uh, I want to say something about the inflation rate as far as when you go shopping, everything's more money, which means that the sales tax goes up, not the percentage, but the amount that you're paying. So in other words, if you pay ten dollars for something and then the inflation rate makes it go up to fifteen, why then you're paying that seven percent on fifteen dollars and not ten dollars? And so that tax revenue is increasing already. So I wonder if the council can consider that, uh, as something that they can use. I'm going to forget everything because I didn't bring a pen. But I also want to talk about what, Ms. Bingam brought up about the commercial property. And yes, I agree with the other gentleman that that Antelope Drive, the commercial property was turned into residential property. And so, and I personally know because I live on, right off of, uh, my house backs up to Antelope Drive. And so that property that's there right off of Banbury, and they're talking about putting a whole bunch more residents in there. And then on the other side, that corner, there's another piece that's commercial property that's been coming up as being changed to residential property. So this is a huge problem because we are not, you know, you're not increasing your revenue with commercial property. You're just bringing in more residents. Then we have to have more fire, more, uh, police, more, um, water, everything. And I know Brody brought up the fact that they bring in their own revenue, but then he talked about the fact that our city is growing and so we need more police and fire. Um, but I thought that they were paid for by the new people coming in. So that doesn't really, you know, at that, that doesn't work for me, that, that logic. There was a couple of things that I want to say, and I'm going to remember them when I sit down. But I thank you for your time. I know, you know, I know you do care about Syracuse, but I, I am very concerned about the enormous amount of growth that's going on on Antelope. And I, I really think that, you know, we just, we have so much of that going to happen in the next year. Do we really know? I know you have figures and everything like that. I'm sure you've done that. But we really can't say for sure until it happens, what's going to happen to city, the city. But I think it's going to be a lot different. And a lot of my neighbors are very concerned between, in the afternoon hours, I can't even get on to, to Antelope. I can't get out of my housing tract because there's so much traffic. And I just, you know, because of the, the growth with the freeway. So I'm just disappointed with how much has been allowed to happen in such a short amount of time.
My name is Steve Stolzenberg. I live on seven fifty one South, twenty three twenty five West. And I'm new to Syracuse. Um, I bought an existing home and the residents that lived there before moved out of state. But I've been in communities that have done a tremendous amount for city planning that offsets the fact that you have significant growth when you build high density housing in an area that is already, uh, fairly high in traffic. Previous community that I lived in, uh, spent money, required those who developed new properties where there were high density housing or where there was additional homes, put in, required, uh, the, the developer pay for things such as stoplights, widening of roads and, and increased, uh, police protection. And, uh, I think it's important that when a, a city decides to add additional housing, particularly high density housing, that they tax the, the developer to the point that he understands the impact on the city with regard to the number of additional occupants that apply, that, that occupy the area, uh, in which they're now living. You will have to widen Antelope Drive because of additional housing that you've built. You, you have additional traffic. You have to be able to manage that traffic. And I, I'm not, I'm not certain because I don't know, but I, I would like to know what the city does in regard to planning so that the additional growth, additional population that's, that is imposed on the community is, is appropriately assessed for that additional growth and the impact on the community.
Colin Christiansen, twenty eight forty nine West, seven hundred South. And I hope you don't make a fool of myself. I'm not a accomplished orator. I might have to have Lisa help me here.
We're glad you're here.
Uh, and as far as this, what he mentioned, this high density housing, that is not what the general populace of Syracuse wanted, especially the older segment. Somehow our prior mayor got that through. And I don't know, there's a lot of us just angry about that. And I wish it would stop. Services was mentioned. Syracuse tries to take care of their services. I have a little exception to that. When Kerbin Gutter and Sidewalk was put in on seven hundred South, the company that did that took out my individual valve for secondary water. for secondary water. So I don't have one and I have called the, oh, can't remember the people anyway concerning that three different years. And they said, well, okay, we'll come take care of that. And I haven't seen a body yet. As far as planning commission, I called them the other day because I had some questions. And I, I just don't get a response from them. I, I don't know if they're hiding somewhere or what. But there's no, been no response from the planning commission. And I just want to throw out on taxes. Now this isn't something that's your fault. But I'm going to present a situation. I retired in two thousand nine. Since that time, I've re- we have received a minimal increase in income. But taxes have increased several hundred dollars. Now exactly what are we going to do now? Is taxes keep going up, but my income doesn't go up. Uh, we built a garage with an add-on so we don't have to run downstairs anymore for the, the wash room and the, the freezer and whatnot. But, uh, that took our, took my retirement money. So I am really in a bind as taxes keep going up. Thank you.
Mayor Mon, can we have staff address the, like the, how we, how we address impact fee facility plans and, um, in regards to the last question you asked about what we do to plan, uh, for those efforts?
Let's, okay, I will write that down, but let's let them finish first.
Thank you, City Council and, uh, for the presentation. Appreciate that as well. It, it was very well done. Lots of good information. I did also have a question about the services that are being increased in terms of the increased officers, firefighters, et cetera. As I understood from your presentation that increases in existing services would typically be paid for from the increase in growth, not from a property rate increase. And so I'm a little bit confused by that. Um, my name's Devin Smith. I reside at sixteen ninety six west, twenty six forty south. And want you to know that I'm not anti-tax, uh, like the gentleman several before me. I appreciate and, um, I'm grateful for the opportunity to live in a society that provides the conveniences and the opportunities that we have that can only be done through the, the organizations, the governments that, that provide them. So thank you for, for that. By way of advanced degrees, I'm both an economist as well as a public administrator. And while I can't, uh, attest to a complete knowledge of everything related to these, uh, tax increases, um, I just haven't had the time to, to dive in. I, I do feel I'm qualified to offer some insights and analysis on topics such as inflation and taxation. The first insight I'd like to offer is that while taxation or excuse me, inflation is a factor and the need for this tax increase, it seems like in the last couple of city council meetings and in your message, mayor, we were driving home inflation was the reason for all of this. And I'm grateful that the presentation tonight explained some other things. But I want to make sure that it's understood and that as council and staff that I've spoken with as well, that we're actually represent, not, I, I fear we're not accurately representing this in a lot of degrees. Yes, inflation is real and yes, it's a factor, but it's not the main driver in any of these tax increases. According to the city financial records and I have here the, um, the, the tentative budget proposal where I'm pulling these numbers from. Uh, in two thousand twenty one, the city collected, uh, three point five million in property tax. If the pro- proposed tax increase is approved, the city is projected to collect four point nine million this year. This is a one point four million or three, or thirty eight percent year over year increase. It's a little number, a little bit different than the one on your presentation. I'm not sure where that difference comes from, but I am using the numbers from the, the tentative budget proposal. And per the Bureau of Labor Statistics Inflation Calculator, which I noticed you also used in your presentation, today's equivalent of the three point five million collected last year is three point eight. So in other words, only seventeen percent of the proposed tax increase can be explained by inflation. This is leaving one point one million or eighty three percent that needs alternative justification. The services you, uh, the goods and services used to calculate the inflation index is likely not a perfect representation of the city's expenditures. But it tells us that there is much more than inflation drive, driving this tax increase. The main driver is not inflation, but rather what I call net increases. These new line items of, of, of staff that's being added to the budget. These decisions are council decisions that you're making. Now I don't refute that they're needed. They, they, a lot of them probably are needed. But I would just ask that as a council and as staff, we accurately represent that we're owning the decisions that we're making and not justifying, uh, them or portraying them as being caused uh, by inflation. Uh, my second point is related to the city's five-year property tax trend. If the proposed increase is approved, the city's property tax revenue, revenue, and I recognize that's only five percent of the total. Um, but, but that specific piece will have increased by over a hundred and twenty, by, by a hundred and twenty-two percent over the last five years. So a hundred and twenty-two percent in property tax revenue over the last five years that the city's received. Again, I recognize that's a small percentage. A portion of that's related to new construction coming in. Um, through the analysis that I did, I, I estimate that that's about thirty percent. Fifteen percent of that can be attributed to inflation, but there's another seventy-seven percentage points there that have to be attributed to council decisions, decisions that the city's making to have a net increase in, in something, right? Like was, was provided here. Like others have presented, I think we're all individually feeling increases. Mine has gone up, uh, ninety-four percent. And I, I, I think our hands are probably tied a little bit this year. You know, I know the tentative budget's tentative, um, but there's some, there, there's some real challenges with undoing it, uh, at, at this point, right? And, uh, so I recognize that, uh, what we're doing here may be more of a formality, uh, than, than anything. Uh, there's a, a, a tax theory or saying that goes broaden the base and lower the rate. Probably heard it. This means the best practice in tax, taxation is to tap into many revenues, as many revenue streams as possible. And you've highlighted many of those today. So that any one revenue stream isn't overburdened. As you look at the tax increase over the last five years, the trend, Syracuse City seems to be relying too heavily on that property tax revenue stream. And as, as has been portrayed by others, it's, it's a little bit unsustainable. If you go out another, another five years and you continue that trend, we're going to be on that worst five list. That would put us up in that category, right? Or at least a lot closer to it. And so we need to be mindful of that. And I, as the new road comes in, and if it's possible, I would encourage the council as well as staff to aggressively seek economic development opportunities. So that over the next five years, we can avoid the type of trend we've seen these last few years. Thank you.
So I do want to comment on a couple of those points really quickly. Um, first, I, I believe that I accurately represented in my message that inflation was a component, not the only factor of where we, we are today. Okay. Okay. So I mean, inflation's a part of our problem, but it not the only problem. You, you make some very good points and to that end, I, I would just say that I have pledged, the reason that I've changed the shift in where we were going to focus on business development. Um, we've only had seven months of that effort. So you don't see that overnight, but I agree with you one hundred percent. That that is the shift that we need to make. I, I, I made that point when running for mayor and I'm trying to follow through with that. That is, uh, but it's hard to deliver in seven months.
Can I touch on that?
Go ahead.
One of the things that businesses do, and Mary can correct me if I'm wrong. He's been working very hard to get businesses here, by the way. I, I would like you guys to know that. He really has. Thank you guys. I, Zupas come in and stuff like that. Sorry, sorry about that. So the mayor has been working really hard to get businesses here. I, I want you guys to be assured of that. But one of the things businesses do is they study the survival rate of businesses within a city. And if businesses in that city aren't surviving, they're not willing to bring their company to that city. So the fact that we don't patron our own businesses and they're not really surviving is one of the main aspects that's preventing us from getting larger companies.
I'd also like to address, uh, your, to the point of, of besides inflation, what else? And I think we all saw what happened with the, um, defund the police movement that happened over the last couple of years and how impactful it was across the board for all of our police departments. What that did was decrease the amount of people willing to do the job. And it's imperative that we keep these incredible staff that we have who are willing to get up in the middle of a meeting and go to an emergency, as I saw our fire uh, department do and, and, um, but what we've seen is, is, uh, pilfering going on. So that's one of the issues that we're really dealing with as well. That's very impactful to us is that we have cities around us who are willing to offer a larger amount, a, a larger compensation. And we've had to address that. And that is imperative to our safety here in the city. So that's another issue, but I would also like to address, uh, what's happened with commercial as well. Um, Jen is right that it, it is something that they look at the survivability rate, but they also look at rooftops. And if you're looking for somebody to invest largely in a community, they require a demographic study. The banks will not loan money unless they can prove a survivability. And most of that is based on the demographics within a, a several mile range around them. We have a, a, an issue with having one, one of our sides be a lake. So we don't have a population there to pull from, but beyond that, we do have to show that they can survive here and that is a rooftop study. And the banks will not loan the money for a brick and mortar. And so that leaves us at a, at a real, we have, we have to make some decisions. If we say that we want a stronger commercial base, we have to offer what those commercial properties and developers are willing to, to the risk that they'll take. And so one of the things that we have done is a mixed use development, which combines and makes it more, makes, puts them in a better position to create spec positions or spec developments that they can't, they don't know who's going to fill them. They can't promise who will fill them. And so we're saying to them, you take all the risk of millions of dollars. And the only way that they can do that is that we give them something they can depend on, which is some homes. So that's just a little background in that.
Mayor, could, could I clarify one thing too?
Yes, please.
On the inflation. Um, so I, I hope that at least my presentation didn't come across like inflation is driving this, this, um, uh, I don't believe I said that in the presentation, but I hope it didn't come across that way. The, the slide that showed the additional staff members, that's the proposal for this tax increase is to fund those staffing members and the vehicles. So, so you, you are accurate, I guess is what I'm saying. Uh, your, your assessment is accurate. Yeah, if, if the mayor wants me to answer, I'll answer.
Go ahead, Brody.
So, um, yeah, a couple of reasons. So first of all, um, I, I think the reality is, is the, 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 the property tax rates aren't set high enough to cover all the new positions. And so, uh, the, you know, when you look at it, three hundred and fifty dollars a, a house, how many houses are required to pay for one position? You know, it's about two hundred and, two hundred and twenty homes before you can actually fund one position. And when you need eight, nine positions across eight departments, um, it doesn't cover it. Um, and so, uh, you know, it, the, the cell, we've been able to cover a lot of it with the increased sales tax. I think that was mentioned before. Um, so we are covering quite a bit actually with the, the, the additional sales tax, but it, it's just not enough to cover the additional staffing.
Good. Based on, oh, sorry. Can I interject on one?
Yeah, go ahead.
A- as a new council member, one of the things that, you, you know, through this budgeting process that I learned is in regards to impact fees. So the state limits, be- because that was one of my first questions when we were going through this budgeting process and I'm seeing this pool of money from impact fees on new developments and how are, you know, are we making sure that those new developments are paying for the impact they're having on those, um, on, on the community, on the city? And we're, we're restricted by state law on what we can spend those impact fees on. And correct me if I'm wrong, but personnel is not one of the things
Absolutely not.
We can use impact fees for. So we, we had, we had multiple, you know, that being on council is kind of an, a, a executive position. So we're taking department heads that are saying, hey, this is our need to provide quality service to our city. And all of those departments were, were being overworked and they all had a needs list and you know, in order to, to fulfill the needs of the community, we had to make, we had to look at it and say, okay, what, what positions do we need to add? Now, did we add all of the positions with the proposed budget that were requested? No. But we tried to, we tried to be pragmatic and, and whittle it down to what we thought was, was necessary. So we weren't going to continual, continually be losing personnel to other cities or other entities. And had, because there's real costs associated with training new employees, and having high turnover. And so that, that, at least in my mind, that's one of the things that, that we were faced with as well.
I'm gonna, uh, invite, uh, Councilman Savage to join in. He's with us online. He has some comments.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, uh, to address the last report, I, I did think that was very well written and you identified a lot of points. But, um, one flaw in your analysis was it only covered the last five years. Um, if you go back, uh, a decade and even twenty years, we actually had a very long period of time that, one, one of which, you know, parts of which were a former recession uh, during which there were layoffs. So we actually reduced staff during that time. We also, uh, there was a very long time where no one, none of the councils, uh, were willing to even hold rate. So what happened about years ago is the city was so far behind because we had never adjusted for inflation at all. We've been slowly trying to build back up to where we can afford to run the city. Um, as Ben pointed out, we've all, we've had a time where we were, um, paying to subsidize the water. We had reduced staff, so we didn't have enough to keep our parks, uh, well maintained. Uh, and our staff has been putting forth Herculean efforts to try and keep roads maintained. And there has been some neglect over those, that decade or two decades where just stuff wasn't fixed. And the longer you put off doing things, um, we're now in a situation where we have to catch up. And so I, uh, a- agree with a lot of the comments. I, I was one that voted against a lot of these, uh, densities, just because, uh, I don't think we should do it all at once. But at the same time, with them coming in to councilman or councilwoman Bingham's point, it, it does provide, uh, something for businesses to look at, to, uh, provide reason for, thanks to get money to build here. We're, we're hoping, as has been pointed out, with the introduction of a new freeway entrance, uh, that will spur a new commercial node. We are actively working to recruit businesses around that. Um, we all know that if we can find a good ice cream shop, there's going to be a, a, a fortune to be paid there by whatever ice cream shop moves in. Um, we are out looking for those things because we live here too. We pay state taxes as everybody else and, uh, I don't like doing this, but at the same time I do realize that I want to be able to go to parks and have them look nice. I, so you'll notice we have park workers, um, that are there to help keep those things active. Um, we have maintenance workers that are gonna be fixing those roads. And as we continue to catch up, now, I, I agree, this is not sustainable. We cannot do this year over year, but that's not the plan. Rather than nickel and dime, this year, we just decided to look at where the most immediate needs were. How could we fix it? And the plan to not keep doing this year over year. We're hoping that this is all we're gonna need for a long time. Now, I don't have a crystal ball and I can't commit a future council to anything, but we are doing our best to make sure that we provide the highest quality of service we can and affordable cost. And that's the goal here is to try and make that happen. But yeah, in that analysis, I did notice you only went back five years. Um, it might be worth looking back just a little bit longer. And you can see a time where nothing was done and now we're paying the consequence. Thanks.
Okay, so, uh, at this point, because we have kind of been hedging on the impact fee discussion, I'm gonna entertain that question here, Seth. I, I do think that people need to understand a little bit about how impact fees are legislated in this state. Uh, it is a continual update and we get updates all the time where, uh, a law passed one year says you can no longer charge impact fees for certain things. And impact fees keep being cut back to refer to things that may or may not cover the actual cost. For example, we cannot, uh, for like the, where there is a traffic impact fee, it would be, in my mind, justifiable to say that with new people coming in, that project should pay the impact of roads that will deteriorate faster. But that is not allowable. It can only pay for a road that does not exist today. So we, it may be, and in fact, I live on a road that is next to a new development. And that new, that new development, because of the traffic up and down, destroyed the road in a year, which was slated on our master plan to last for another five to seven years. Now we have to replace it, but the impact fee can't be used for that because it was an existing road. And so these are struggles that we have with the way that we, uh, are allowed to gather fees. You would, you know, again, I wish that our traffic fees could pay for things like that. We also have fees for upgrading utilities. And, um, so if we, you pay an impact fee, it can only pay for a new line, even though a line might actually have to be upgraded because of the changes that are happening. So we end up behind. And this is one of the challenges we're trying to address is that with city growth, the fees that you would think cover this growth do not, and it's legislated that way. So you do end up paying for some of that, and I'm sorry, I wish it wasn't the case. I, I do wish that we could charge appropriately. It would make more sense to me. Uh, I'm gonna let Brody chime in here on the impact fees and see if we can answer all of Seth's question, but that was part of the thing that I think is kind of missed on folks.
Sure. So, uh, the city does, um, what's called an impact fee facilities plan for every type of impact that we can charge new development for. So, uh, we have a plan for roads, um, water, sewer storm, um, secondary water. All these things, um, uh, it shows kind of what we have now and what we plan to implement due to growth. And we can actually charge new development for that new stuff that we have to build. Um, it's limited to state law and there's all kinds of requirements on, on how that's limited. But, um, it, it does require planning and, and the city does have a plan for each of those. And we do charge those fees and we do require new development to pay for them. But again, it's just for capital improvements, for capacity, for, you know, things like new water tank or new water lines or new roads or things like that. It does not cover any personnel at all. It's, uh, by law, you cannot pay for personnel with that or, or repair.
Or repair. We actually have a park impact fee based on the need for new people to have someplace to recreate. And yet it has to be spent on something net new. It can't be there to restore a playground that maybe deteriorates five years faster than its expected life.
But your representatives from the state can hear you on that. And I've called them as soon as I learned of this, because I thought it was crazy that we can't. You're giving us a whole bunch, we've got a whole bunch of people, but we can't hire a cop and a couple firefighters with that money? And I've called them a couple of times and I think everybody should. That's the only way those, the way we can use those impacts is gonna get changed is if our citizens contact the representatives and say, this isn't right.
Mayor, it might be best if someone can go to the microphone, because we have people online.
Yeah.
They can't hear you.
I, I don't mean to make this a whole discussion, but yeah, if you wanted to clarify.
Well, yeah, my comments were more to property taxes, um, in terms of the increased property taxes that's coming from a new development. Is there an analysis done to understand whether or not those property taxes are going to sustain the, the increase in, you know, the number of officers and, and fire department and things like that? Because otherwise you're saying that we have had to do a rate increase because what's coming in new for property tax revenue isn't enough to add the additional, uh, service personnel that are needed to sustain the new developments. And so the existing residents are, uh, shouldering the burden as well of some of that new. Now, I, I recognize that it sounds like we're behind the eight ball, right? If you go back five, more than five years, as Councilman Savage said, we, uh, you know, that my analysis didn't go, that, that maybe we're, you're just biting the bullet here that should have been bit off, you know, a little bit at a time over a 10 year period.
That, that is actually a part of our challenge and we've dealt with that for the last couple of years is that there are things that have come due, that, you know, things that, I mean, for example, they did no road work for several years after the recession, none. And, and yet roads continued to deteriorate. And so that's why when I began on the council a few years back, we suddenly had the challenge of a roads plan that was way behind.
Yeah.
And we've, we've worked hard to update that. I am gonna let Brody comment on your last point, but I think we also have to move on. We have a lot of people to.
Yeah, we, we've done some financially, financial modeling with the help of Zions Bank Public Finance Group on sort of a macro level of, um, as things develop, how will it play out over several years? And, and as far as revenue and expenses and based on the land uses? And we kind of play with the model to see how that might shake out and that sort of thing. So we've done that analysis on each individual project. Um, uh, we've, we've, on a rough level have done that, but it's not, making land use decisions solely on a financial basis does become problematic, um, when, um, you know, the city has a, has a plan for the future. Uh, making a specific decision on one application for like a zoning change based solely on, on budgetary impact can be problematic for the council to, but kind of in a legal sense from the, from the developer, the landowner's perspective.
Yeah. No, it makes sense. Thank you for your explanations.
Okay, I'm gonna move us on because we have many that still want to talk. Who was next?
My name is Doug Lund. I live at 2023 Jackson Lane. Uh, just real quick, I am thankful for all of our emergency volunteers and all that kind of stuff and our police officers and firemen, because I was the one that got rear ended over on Danbury and Antelope on my way here. And I stopped the car behind me because she was going full speed, crashed right into the back of me, and that's why I'm late.
Thanks for coming though.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, some of the things that are concerning me is I was at meetings months ago when there was a three to two vote on raising tax, raising this, giving people more money, doing all those kind of things. And the only two descending votes were because they wanted to give more rather than not, you know, what we were doing. Um, I appreciate the fact of, uh, Councilman Watson putting a business into Syracuse. That's what it's all about. We need more businesses in Syracuse. My understanding is, is the person that was getting business development and doing those kind of things has spent more time with the high density housing and the problems that have come because of that, rather than developing businesses coming in here. I really feel bad that nobody's making the money that they need to make and they can't do that. But I'm telling you, every single day of the week, my wife and I are delivering Amazon packages. We're driving DoorDash. We're driving Uber Eats. We're driving Grubhub. And we see the money going out of this city to other businesses in other places because we don't have the business development here in this city. Running a business, it's an 80/20 rule. Okay, you go and you take care of the 80% and the 20 will happen. You plan, prepare, then execute and succeed. Right now, we've got 200 city employees and a lot of them make over a hundred grand a year. I don't know how many in here make over a hundred grand a year, but I don't. And have I got any increases in any of this? I haven't. I've had to find ways to make money. I've had to find ways to go do things. We say that we can't expand to the West and all that. We've got a gold mine in Antelope Island. We're the only access to Antelope Island. Why aren't we promoting frickin' Antelope Island? Why aren't we doing that so that we can bring more businesses into that? Why is fat cats going to Clinton? Because they have more rooftops? Bull. Because they've found people to work with them and people will go there. I don't believe in this rooftops thing and all that kind of stuff. If we plan, prepare, execute, succeed, we'll have it. Seth, I appreciate meetings ago where you went around to all the different department heads and said, do we really need this? Do we really need that? What do we do? How are we gonna work this out? You know, I had three people in our office, office manager, two gals taking care of everything like that. No, we have one now. And yeah, they've had to put on their big, they've had to take care of things. And they've had to do what it takes. I've had two of my technicians and another office manager leave and go to a competitor. Why? Because oh, they're paying in more money because they're out of, you know, they're nationwide. What have I had to do? I've had to find other employees. I've had to train them. I've had to make it work. Okay, with us, what are we gonna do? Oh, we're gonna go to every other person in the city and we're gonna take care of 200 employees from the city. And we've got 50,000 eventually, right now 37 or whatever, people that live in the city that we're gonna go and not take care of because we're taking care of the 200. And no offense to city employees, but hey, let's take care of them when the other 2,000 houses that we've already approved that are coming in and we get the revenue from them. Let's take care of them when we go and get more businesses here and do that. Let's spend money on getting two guys for business development. If we got one guy that can't do it all because he's taking care of high density housing, let's sell more. That's how I get more businesses, selling more. I can't just arbitrarily tell my customers, sorry, need more money. I haven't planned. I haven't done all the things that I'm supposed to. No, I bought two new trucks in the last month because I had vehicles that were going 380,000 miles on them, okay? And it came time, but we've saved for them. We've saved to do it and now we've been able to take care of it. We know these things are coming up. We know the problems that are gonna come with high density housing and what we need to do. But, and we know that we can't use the money from the impact fees to pay for that. So where's it gonna come from? Plan, prepare, execute, succeed. That's what we need to do.
Hi, my name is Lisa Stolzenberg and I live at 751 South, 2325 West. I first want to say thank you for your time. I know you're a volunteer. And I appreciate and I am grateful that you take the time to represent me as well. I also thank the firefighters and the policemen. Um, I have family members and some that have passed on that have both fit that category. And I do appreciate their service as well. I have a couple of recommendations, um, because I don't want to rehash. Um, but number one, first of all, Jennifer, you mentioned about who to write to, um, in regards to, um, getting more, excuse me, the funds. Could you please put that on our water bill and have it printed?
You're gonna have to ask that question again. I'm not sure what you're asking.
You, you had said that we needed to talk to our representative or?
Yeah, about changing the way we spend, the way we're allowed to spend our impact fees.
Correct. If you could be put on the water bill of, of who we could talk to or something like that and let people be aware. I didn't know that.
Yeah, we could post the representatives.
That would be something that wouldn't cost additional money and word would get out. That's number one suggestion. Um, second suggestion that I have is that when you have high density housing, I, and I'd like to have a clarification that as the building has been sold or, um, the develop, as the developer has sold either condos or apartment buildings or whatever, usually the norm is that the homeowner is the one that's responsible to pay for most of the taxes in regards to the fees for the city. I would like to propose, and this might take a little work, but I would like to propose, if we could, that each individual unit, they have the people, they should be paying as much as a homeowner should. It shouldn't just be all relied on a homeowner. That is not fair. The third thing I have is that, um, and a suggestion is, is that any developer that develops besides the impact on roads and, and what all, they should be providing the park, the land for the park and the upkeep that has been done in other cities and it can be done in Syracuse. And if we have enough people that want to live here and there's all this development, that should be in, uh, put into their criteria that if they want to do that, then they should provide the means to sustain that park, um, as well as the sidewalks and whatever. I do want to say that as you, as we grow more, more is expected. That's just a no brainer. So we need to make sure that as we grow, that we're able to sustain the needs of the amount to be able to make this city still a place that everyone would like to go to. Thank you.
Um, I will say to your, we can post contact information for your local representatives on our website. I'm not sure if we can legally do it on a bill.
We, we could do the mag, the monthly magazine.
We could do it in the magazine as an information source.
And call them. Definitely call them.
Okay, so, uh, the other thing was when you mentioned about, uh, the way that people are taxed, I'm gonna have to defer that and say that's, there's some legal question there that we'll have to explore. Uh, and we'll have to get with our city attorney because I'm not sure what that would do. So I don't want to make any promises or expectations until we get briefed on what legally is possible. But thank you for bringing a suggestion. Next.
Hi, my name is Ike Buckley. I live at 1195 West, 1575 South. I, I just, I find it irresponsible at a time when inflation is at its highest point that it's been so far. When we, we have a federal government that's passed a bill that will cause inflation to grow. And we're gonna see that growth in November. So we're gonna be paying more for everything that we're paying for right now. And, and I, I reiterate some of the words that have been said. I, we, we have families that are feeling that. And for the city council to want to raise taxes, that's just one more, one more thing that we, we don't want to deal with. It seems the more that I observe things that are going on, it, I, I get the big, we, the big impression that we as a people are in bondage and we don't even see it. And we want to raise taxes. We want to make people pay more. It just, it just seems very irresponsible to me. We're paying more in gas. You know, it, it, I just, you know, some, some, some of the member, some of the, the people who've come up and spoke said that they, they're not against taxes. And I, I, the older I get, the more I dislike taxes. And the libertarian in me keeps saying taxation is theft. And I, I, I sit here and I wonder what's happening to conservatism in Utah. We're supposed to be a conservative state. And yet it doesn't seem like we're doing very conservative things. Raising taxes doesn't seem conservative to me. And when it comes to things like elections that are coming up and reelection, it seems to me that running on a platform of we lowered taxes sounds a lot better than we raised taxes during a time when inflation was at the highest, when people were struggling, when families were struggling. My wife and I try to be as responsible as we can. We have chosen to have six children. We homeschool them. So you can imagine how I feel about having to give taxes to Davis County schools when we don't send our children to school. We have one income. The only debt that we have is my, our mortgage. No credit card debt, no car payments. We don't stream anything. We don't even watch TV. And on one income, watching your grocery bill double has been hard, but because my wife and I are very prudent and we're very frugal, we were able to save the money so we can prepare for the things that are to come. I would hope that everybody here on the city council does what's right and I would hope that you vote against this tax raise. In fact, I would hope that you guys would lower taxes. I think you would find that it would make a lot of people very happy. And I get it. We want, we want things. I voted against the, 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 the park that we voted on last year. And I voted against it based on what I had read by Dave, our mayor, in it. Cause I didn't think we had the money and I didn't think it was something that we needed yet. That's all.
My name is Mary Lee Scast. I like live at twenty-three ninety-two West, ten twenty-five South. Um, I just had a couple of proposals based off of some of the capital projects. I, um, the BMX course, you guys talk about how costly parks can be to maintain and to, it takes time, it takes manpower, it takes maintenance, cleanup, repairs. Do we really need a BMX course in this fiscal year or in the next five fiscal years for? We have plenty of parks. Yes, we do have an influx of growth, but due to the inflation and cost of, cost of living increases, we really need a BMX course now. Why not promote fixing up the parks, which I already see those listed on the capital projects? And the BMX course is listed to take almost one million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand. Um, and on top of that, an accessway to the BMX park for another four hundred and ninety-five thousand. And why not change policies for the city to encourage zero scapeing to override HOAs and CCNRs that cause, um, people to have an inability to actually zero scape their front yards, which would reduce the cost or need for more secondary water usage or pumps or larger reservoirs to provide secondary water to people when you can zero scape and reduce the amount of water that people need to use to water their yards because they're not watering their front yard. Uh, when HOAs and CCNRs don't allow them to zero scape. Um, so those costs and we have plenty of parks that you could offer more maintenance on, like the xylophone tool doesn't have the drum set. You could, that would allow people to actually use the one parks we already have available. Um, you could, uh, add an extra day for the splash pads so that people can actually utilize the splash pad on a day like Sunday where a lot of people have a day off and they work Monday through Friday, but they can't actually go on a really busy Saturday day and we'd still get more use of parks, but not accrue a whole additional cost of another park and maintenance and the cement work to build a BMX park course. Just food for thought.
I would note that the splash pad that we have has to, it can't run twenty-four, seven, seven days a week. The maintenance cost becomes Okay, so there is a day that has to be off. A council, a previous council voted that that's the day that's, that's off. So anyway, go ahead, sir.
Really quick, I wanted to address that the legislature has already taken out the authority in the teeth of the HOA. So anything, it's all trumped by the legislature.
Legislature will not allow us regulate beyond that.
Yeah, CCNRs cannot be more restricted.
It cannot be more restrictive than the state rules.
So the state is actually allowing that zero scape you spoke of.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening. My name is Tony Ciccarelli. I live at, uh, twenty thirty-four South Mills Lane. I had a quick question. Uh, I saw all the accolades from the presentation, you know, twelve years running, you know, this is the best place to live. I, I moved here about, uh, two years ago with my wife. She got stationed here. And I was just, uh, wondering, the, uh, the conservatory, the, the bird conservation center, is the city pay for that? No, the Antelope State Park, do we pay for that?
That would be state parks and wildlife management.
So it's not directly from the city?
No, it's not.
Because those are the reasons why my wife and I decided to buy a house here. We didn't buy a house here because of a handful of parks. We didn't buy a house here because of the well-appointed police department. We bought a house here because of the people that make up this community. They're responsible, they're conservative, they're prudent. I most certainly didn't know who the council members were in this city. I didn't care. I've owned a lot of houses all around the country. So has my wife in other countries as well. And I have to say what's already been said. Nothing I can say from this podium is going to change your minds, is it? Is it? Nothing. Not the stats, the economist, the pleas from people who have lost wages due to inflation. If that doesn't get to you, nothing I can say from this podium is going to change your minds, is it? We have no recourse. Now, the next couple of things I'm gonna say are not directed at you because this is not a rally. But I imagine if we really disagree with you, we should vote you out. We should run for council ourselves and lower taxes. I don't know how many friends you five people have, but I'm sure upstanding members of this community have a lot of friends who would vote against you. Thank you.
Jim Bishop, uh, seven fifty-eight West, thirty-one fifty South. Uh, I appreciate the presentation. Uh, it was eye-opening. Uh, to those that disagree, you, you probably won me over because I heard at night, there's two cops on duty. And when you call at night, you get the Davis County dispatcher and she doesn't know anything about Syracuse. So when you're trying to explain your situation to her, because she demands it, you're gonna have a little info block there. But what I would like to ask is we've just built grundle apartments all along Antelope Island, or Antelope Road. Are those apartments paying their share? It's been fifty plus years since I lived in an apartment and all I did was pay the rent. I didn't think about whether the guy was paying the water bill or the property tax or Weber County schools. Cause I lived in Weber County. So that's the question I have. Is each unit paying their fair share?
I mean, if that's the question for now, no, because they're not occupied yet.
Well, when they're, when they're occupied.
Yeah. Will they? Uh, do you want to comment on how that works?
Yeah. So you're talking about for the apartments?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So the apartments, um, they're, they're taxed, so the property owner pays the taxes, right?
Okay.
But
I figured that.
But we need to, yeah, but we would all assume that the property owner sets the rent at a level that also includes the ability for him to pay, him or her to pay the tax. So people who rent, they don't have a tax bill.
Exactly.
But the rent that they pay is certainly set at a level that it contributes to actually pay the tax bill by the landowner. And that's, um, you know, if, um, that's just how, that's just how it works with, with landlords, right?
To cover the entire cost of the property.
Of the entire property.
Plus, plus a little bit to put in their pocket.
Yeah, they, 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 they set the
A little bit?
They set the rent. They set the rent to cover the, the property tax. So in a way, they're getting their money to pay the property tax bill from the renters.
So I'd be interested in what kind of property tax a guy pays on a hundred and twenty unit building. Does anybody have that?
It's based on the size of the property and the square footage of the actual residential space. So, so, yeah.
As well as the value of the, of the building on it. So that will have everything to do with the materials that we require they use and things like that. So the more that it costs them to build it, the more higher their taxes are.
One last thing, I'm an old guy, shouldn't be working, but I worked for IRS Medical and we billed for ten different cities ambulance service. And I guarantee you, you can't compare apples to apples or apples to oranges. Because there's some cities and I'm gonna talk to the fire chief. I hope the, you get ready to write some stuff off because I hope that people of Syracuse that you service will pay their bills because there's a lot of cities that we deal with that all we do is chase people. Thank you.
My kid rode in that ambulance. It was a big bill.
He said something about getting old and I know how that feels.
Thank you for coming.
Hey, I, Darwin Perry, thirty-one ten South, eight hundred West. And I'd like to echo what everyone else, uh, has already said about thanking all of you for your service. For what you do for the city and the people here and for the, uh, the great presentations that have helped us, I think, understand. I have to admit, my brain starts to grind a little bit on some of this because there's so much of it. And when you talk taxes and when you talk all this other stuff, it gets pretty, uh, complicated, but I've, uh, been associated with Syracuse for more years than I want to think about. I started out way back in the old days, working at RC Willie and I've been around here off and on and lived here and have, have owned homes here. But I did have, uh, an interesting experience that I wanted to bring up. My company, uh, sent my wife and part of our family to Denver to work for, uh, I was over there about fourteen years. And, uh, the interesting thing that I saw happening over there and I, and it applies everywhere. It's not just a Denver, Colorado issue, but we lived in a, an incorporated area that was squashed between two minor Denver cities. And we paid for services. Because we did, we were an unincorporated city. We had to buy services from everybody else and it, it got to be pretty extreme. And there were other things and we tried to get those other cities to annex us in. And I must have attended a dozen or fourteen meetings where the people from the city, those other cities and their attorneys would pound on the table and say, we do not want housing. Housing costs the cities, costs the city money. We have to provide all those services and do this and do that and everything else. We don't want housing. We want business. Well, we've talked about that tonight. A number of people have. So anyway, I bring that back to where we are here today. And I think we've dug ourselves, and not you folks, not, probably not any of us here, but we've dug ourselves into such a hole. I don't know how we're ever gonna get out. You know, we have so much housing in this Syracuse city. And the business side is, I worked for RC Willie, they're gone. They were one of the largest contributors, I think, to Syracuse as far as funding. They're gone. But the problem I have is that who and where and when, or who is it, or is there anybody that can pull the switch and say, no more housing? The only thing I see happening now is that housing may be slowing down because financing is going up. But somebody, and it may not be any of us here, maybe there's nobody that can stop it. But somehow or another, this insanity with building and high rise, or I mean, high density. My gosh, over the years when they talked about a, an apartment or a high rise, it wasn't seventeen units deep. But you know, and we talk about services. How in the world, you know, I mean, I'm over here by Bluff Ridge School, whichever direction that is. How many more move-ins are we gonna drag into that place? We can't provide schooling. We don't have roads. We don't have infrastructure. And like some people have said, you pull out onto the road at a certain time of the day, you can't get on the road. But somebody, and I don't know what affects the council here tonight, but my concern and my point is this stuff has gotta stop. Somebody has got to do something about this insane development of everything that you, and I'll have people say water. This stuff out here doesn't use any more water? Hey, don't tell me that. Some of that stuff out there was marshland. How can you sit here and tell me that doesn't require any more water? Now you've got hundreds and hundreds of units of housing out there and they all have to wash clothes, go to, you know, take showers, go to school. So, you know, we, we've got ourselves in a real mess. And to be quite honest with you, I think our most serious problem here tonight, along with all the other things that have been mentioned, but this, uh, somebody's got, and I'd like to, any ideas, I know we can't do it here tonight. But there must be something that we can do to work on this. I've heard so many people, myself included, saying, I'm getting ready to move out of here. Getting ready to move out of Syracuse. This is not working. And then when you throw the taxes into, into it and what you folks are dealing with, services. Anyway, again, I just want to say I appreciate, uh, appreciate all that we all do, but we've all got to work together somehow. And if we want to save this city as a place to live, you know, and, and like, and I'm gonna be a little bit facetious, tongue in cheek. Is the sheriff here? He might come after me. But right now, the most prob, most successful businesses I can see in Syracuse are fire, firecracker stores. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Brown and I live at two three eight seven West, seventeen fifty South. Um, we, this November will have been here in Syracuse for five years. We're a retired military family. We've lived overseas all over, you know, the nation. We've been here almost five years and you guys, um, in your Brody's presentation said that it's average household's gonna go up three hundred and seventy-two dollars per year. Well, we got our tax bill in the mail the other day and if this goes through from the first year that we were here to November, ours taxes will have gone up a thousand dollars in five years. That's a lot of money for, I, I called and got all of that.
You be careful. You're talking just about the city portion because uh, honestly, I'm not sure if anybody in the city actually plays, pays a thousand dollars to the city. Now, if you
Well, I'm just saying the total tax bill, that's what it was.
Right. I understand.
So if past, you know, tax increases are So if past, you know, tax increases are gonna, if, if that's what the future is, we won't stay here. We're not going to want to pay double, you know, another thousand in the next five years. You're, I mean, for the retiring people that are already on, we're not on a, you know, retired yet or we still have income coming in, but if we were, we couldn't afford to stay and pay that. So you guys really need to think about your senior population who probably were here long before any of all of us, where they helped build this city. You need to think about them, not just the new people coming in. And then, um, it was mentioned that this in, you know, the impact fee does not cover existing roads and stuff. Then why did you let them build the new houses? Why put that on the, on the people that already live here? Cause we didn't even want the houses here and, or the apartments here in the first place. But it got passed anyway. And so, um, that's mostly just, I think that's mostly what I want to say, but I just don't think that some decisions made here in the past years have been responsible. You can't just keep taxing people to death because then we'll leave and go somewhere else where we can afford it.
Lynn Millgate. I live at seven twenty-eight south eighteen twenty-five west Syracuse, right by Syracuse High. First of all, I want to thank you. I want to thank you, like everybody else has, for your time that you spend and everything else. And I recognize the city is already in the same kind of predicament we're in. They only have so much money and the squeeze on the expenses are getting to you. I recognize that. So we're all in the boat somewhat together. I've been retired for thirteen years and, um, my retirement has gone up very little. Well, even last year, we got five percent, but you guys want to raise taxes thirty-three percent. It doesn't equate. It just doesn't equate. I don't know what the city has done as far as salaries are concerned. Did you give them twenty percent, five percent? What did you do that way? I don't, I don't know that. But my retirement's not going up thirty-three percent. I love it and I'd give you the taxes if I could get that kind of a thing. Another thing I want to point out is about three things. For a long time in my career, I lived in the California area and I don't mean to hit anybody that comes from California or anything else. But if we, people are exiting California like crazy. If we don't want our city to be a California, then we have to stop building those multi-complex units that are on analog. We just can't do that. That's the way California is. And it is a nightmare there. If, and if you came from it, you know, it's a nightmare there. And it's becoming a nightmare here. I used to be able to go out on the city streets in the middle of the day. Easy to go. It ain't that way anymore in this city. I moved to this city because I come and wanted a bedroom community. It's not a bedroom community anymore. It really isn't. It's becoming such a crowded mess. And we also get this little theme several months ago saying, hey, we've used fifty percent of our water and fifty percent of the year hasn't even gone yet. In public, you gotta slow down on using the water. But we still build those multi-complex buildings. We gotta stop that like it's been voiced over and over again. And if some of that property could have been used for commercial businesses and that, I think we could have got a property, a, a tax base a little better. And yeah, you say, well, we gotta give the businesses something to want to be here. Well, I don't believe it's crowded roads and everything that's going to make them want to be here. And I don't believe, quite frankly, that multi-unit complexes where their employees can live is going to make them want to come here. You gotta give them something better than that. You just do. And another thing I do ask, we've talked about the, um, the multi-unit complexes and how much do they pay for property taxes? And he said, uh, Brody said something about, well, and you've said something about the value of the home and everything. Is that the same kind of proportion that's put on a single family home? And if it is, does it take into consideration how many people are going to live in each one of those units and what the impact is? I know we talked about the impact tax, but the property, the city tax that they, we want to get, is it proportioned to what a single family house is? Is it done that way or have we just played with models and, uh, that's all we've done? Like Brody said, we've played with models. We need to make sure that those multi-unit places are paying the city for, for living here. Let's not make this city a California. Please, let's not make it a California. Thank you.
I, I will comment on one thing, and that is that the way that property values are assessed is not within our control either. I mean, so I do believe that, um, there, it ends up being more for a hot, more dense area, but to be honest, we have no say in that. But the state sets the property tax taxable value per property. So whatever's built, i- it follows that model. Is there anyone else?
I'm Shawna Millgate, seven twenty-eight south eighteen twenty-five west. And you know, all I can say is, is this a fair taxation? Just like so many have said, I am on fixed income. Just recently, I just barely retired in June and I am already feeling the pinch and it's scary. I feel like, do I need to go back to work? I've worked so many years, but do I need to go back to work so I can pay my taxes? So I can buy groceries? So I can have a car that I can go visit family that's in the next city over? It's scary. People, you're all very young. So you've got big ideas, but you need to think about the people that can't afford, we can't afford the taxation that's coming. It's not a fair taxation. I thought that's what this country was built on. Freedoms, fair taxations. It's not happening. It's not happening. Maybe you need more people on your council who are older, who have some wisdom behind them. I'm not saying you don't have wisdom. But I'm saying older people have lived a lot that you haven't. We have the experiences that you may not have. And then maybe you have, you know, I don't know. But we have to have a fair taxation and we have to start thinking about the people who live here. Both commercially, bringing stuff in and all these apartments. I think it's terribly sad to see all of our agriculture land going to apartments. I think that's very sad. We got to have land to, to farm so we can eat. It's going away. Something that needs to be thought about. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? I want to be fair and give everyone a chance before we end public discussion. Okay, I will close public hearing. Um, the next part of this is that we have the opportunity as a council to discuss what you've heard here today from those who've shared, to discuss any thoughts that you've had since our last review of the budget and where we are and what we can do. And then it's up to the council to take a vote, uh, on where we go with this. So I'm actually going to begin myself and say that I am very sensitive, as I told council when we began the budget process and when we gathered to review all of the documents, I'm very sensitive to the fact that we have many seniors here on fixed incomes. And that it's difficult when there are added expenses and you don't have other opportunities. I am very sensitive to the fact that we have a difficult challenge in paying for what people expect. And as mayor, I will say that I get a lot of calls and, and I mean, a lot of calls of people who are telling me we owe them something more than we give today. But, um, a- and I'm not saying that, that I agree or disagree with anybody's personal comment. I'm just saying that that is also a comment that I hear. And yet, we have to balance that with what we can afford and what we can manage. This is a challenge and, and it is one that we are facing. I said it when we were in the budget retreat and I will say it again. I would like to be able to say that we are as lean as we can be with the absolute needs to provide the services and expectations that we have. With a growing city, the needs grow. Um, and, and I respect that. But are we including just those things or is there anything in here that we could do without a little longer? Uh, uh, there is at least one item that I believe is a possibility to cut, but it's not up to me. It is up to the council and I don't think in the long run that I could find enough in the budget that we could cut without cutting an actual service that anybody would feel any different. Uh, because there's the size at this point, the impact, the trivial things that we've cut already in the budget. Last year, just to make the budget balanced, we had to tell staff, you've got to be more frugal with, uh, even office supplies were cut by fifty percent. So, you know, everybody make sure you bring your own pens to work and, uh, you know, I mean, it's, it's gotten to that point over the years of having to cut, cut, cut to try and make ends meet. And yet demands seem to ever increase. So I, I do task the council, please consider every possible thing that, that we can be lean on. But at the same time, we have expectations. So you're going to have to balance that. Um, and I'm going to leave it up to council to discuss their feelings uh, or input on anything that's been said here tonight or where you'd like to go before we take a resolution to certify a tax rate.
So are we going to go through what, what's on the budget right now?
No, no, this is just your comments. We've done this for, so we have had, uh, since we.
There's new stuff.
We collected a budget by, and that's okay, bring it up. But we collected a budget by April. On every meeting, we've had the chance to address or revise the, the budget. And today, again, bring up anything that you'd like to have, any point or part of it to discuss. But it would take, uh, another, it took us eight hours to go through every line item. I, I, we don't have another eight hours. So we won't go, uh, line item by line item, but bring up any item that you'd like to bring up and you're welcome to start.
So my question is the third officer that's listed on here in the police department, where's the chief? Can you, I know that we were talking about the DARE program would, would need another officer. And that's listed in here, but we stripped the DARE truck. So are we not planning on having a? What's going on with that? It seems like it's.
Okay, I'll, chief, do you want to speak to that or, or Brody, did you want to speak to that? Go ahead.
He had, he had momentum. He was already.
All right.
Uh, so the one that's in the budget that you're looking at today, that was the one in the meeting that the council said this would be the backfill to be able to get our metro officer back to metro. Okay. It's had that, that position on there. To my recollection, had nothing to do with our DARE program, which we realized we were putting on, uh, as I said, we're putting it in hibernation until the council can decide whether or not this is a program that you want to do going forward and knowing that that's going to take an officer to be able to replace that position, to be able to have their DARE officer do it. Now, in your question about the truck, the reason that we stripped the logos on the truck is that was about two hundred and fifty dollars to strip it versus buying a brand new vehicle and deploying another vehicle somewhere. So we essentially repurposed the DARE truck. Cause otherwise we wouldn't have, it would have just been sitting there.
The DUI truck that's going to be refitted for K nine unit, why wasn't one of the SUVs used for K nine unit? And then the DUI truck, isn't that one under a grant?
It, it was, but the number of years on the grant for that has, is about five years ago that we purchased the vehicle on that.
There's no longer any stipulations on it.
Yeah. And even if there were, the way, the way that we got it was from the beer tax funds, which have to be used to fight things like alcohol and drug, uh, enforcement. So it being part of the K nine actually still makes sense under the drug enforcement piece.
Because we actually can buy our purchase.
So how is the traffic unit going to work with just one officer?
So when the traffic unit is actually up, and I should say, when we're fully staffed, the way this would work is we would have two officers who are assigned to, um, priority traffic enforcement. Okay. Their, their primary job is traffic enforcement and accident investigation, one on each crew. What we had talked about before was that that would be a separate crew entirely from patrol under a sergeant. So when we went through this, what we've done is we've dropped the sergeant off the traffic unit. We've put them into the line with the crews. So now each crew has a traffic officer, but they are not set aside. And right now they are also not deployed because we simply don't have the staffing. So we don't have a true quote, like traffic unit out in enforcement right now.
So I feel like that's it. I don't know. I feel like this third one. We don't even have the stuff for the DARE program.
Yeah, but it's not happening right now. It's not in.
Yeah. The third one, yeah. But we still have everything listed as the funding for DARE equipment in there, supplies. It's like eight thousand dollars.
Yeah. Which again, we said, if it wasn't something that, uh, we were able to put back in, we just, we're not spending that money. So we haven't spent any of the money in for the DARE stuff. And if we don't have a DARE program this year, the eighty-seven hundred or it's about that eighty-seven hundred would just come back to the city.
I feel like adding a third officer.
So what, from the explanation, and I'm going to recap this a little bit for the public. For the explanation of where we have, as a council, decided we need another officer was justifying that we had to pull back our contribution to the metro unit, which is a county-sized metro, uh, task force. And, um, I will just share my feelings on that because I think it's very important. The way that that metro unit has, uh, impacted our city is enormous. When I read the reports of the busts that take place, that take guns, drugs and, uh, child pornography and things off our, our streets because they're closely linked and some of these busts have accounted for all of this. Uh, illegal weapons and gang activity and, um, it's not just what happens within the borders of our city. Uh, in some cases, busts happen a block from our border. And if you don't think that impacts our city, uh, I think that I would care to differ with you because, um, those people don't know borders. Their crime happens wherever it happens. And so the fact that we contribute to this metro program, I have seen a huge result in, uh, the crime decrease overall. Do we still have crime in, in Syracuse? Absolutely. But it has tempered the crime that we feel in our community. So if we didn't have an officer that we contributed to this task force, we would have to pay for other officers. So the money is kind of a trade-off. It's, you pave one way or another. And I think that we benefit more from contributing and the intelligence and the cooperation that we get from that group. So yes, that's in there.
So is it going to be the traffic officer or the DARE officer? What is it?
Neither. It's metro officer.
Well, that's what, metro officer, the DARE officer. We're not getting a DARE officer. We're getting.
We're not. That's not in the current plan. We will not have a DARE officer because we don't have enough. We're not. That's not in the current plan. We will not have a dare officer because we don't have enough to fund that.
Okay with that.
Yeah, as I as I look through the budget, you know, I think, thank you, Brody, for giving us such a detailed presentation and for kind of highlighting the nine areas that this is really going to fund. Which again, first and foremost, the $450,000 is a, it's something that's we can't change and it's a it's a swap like for like from the county, dropping the the collection and us picking up the collection.
Could you speak more into your mic?
Yeah. So that's that's a wash. There's nothing we can do about that. We've we've postponed law enforcement in years past and then come back later to say that was a mistake. And our community has reached out to us on multiple occasions. I think we've all had multiple opportunities to hear from citizens who shared with us, especially recently in this last six to nine months about public safety, so law enforcement and and our fire department. So those areas I'm not willing to negotiate on either. When you go down each one of these additional areas to a comment Mr. Lund made earlier, we did go to every single one of our department heads and said, you know, what do you need to operate at full capacity while keeping morale high, keeping services high, quality and everything? And then what can you do to skinny that down to the point where you can survive? And and we had to find a happy medium for that service delivery. We have, I think it's been mentioned several times, the cost to train individuals as they leave our city, they're being poached. And it's not just law enforcement. It's in public works. It's in our parks departments. They're going to greener pastures, right? And that is a very costly endeavor to constantly train new staff. And so those are nonnegotiable for me. That comes hand in hand with HR support and IT support. That's what we're asking for, public works, and then the associated small vehicle attachments to those improvements. And so for me, this is where I'm at. We've gone through nine months of scrutinizing this to the point where I I just can't find anything additional that we can go without to still deliver the services that our citizens are begging us for as well. We've had lots of voices here tonight that have said, you know, we can, we can go without, but at the same time, we've had lots and lots of voices that have told us we need those services in this pandemic. We can't come back on parks. I'm sorry, I wish that was something we could do, but that plays into people's mental health and emotional well being, having access to recreation and opportunities and outlets to get rid of that energy that's been pent up for the last several years. We need to, we need to commit to that and I'm I'm willing to continue committing to that.
So I, sorry, I'm going to jump in. So like Seth was saying, I feel like we have been exhaustive in our in our in going through the budget, in having department heads go through and look at what, you know, what what they can get by with. You know, we've, we've, we've had multiple discussions with people with with department heads within the city where people have been going above and beyond and, you know, burning the midnight oil and and doing things outside their purviews, a lot of the things that that some of you have mentioned here that that we need to do, we have been doing that or they have been doing that. And when we, when we look at the services we need to provide to our citizens, which I think is you know, a it's a responsibility we have is to make sure that we're we're providing the needed services, police, fire, public works, parks. I I think we we've, we've, we've been very exhaustive and and we're we're proposing. I think the budget that's proposed is is reasonable. I do think that this could have been less of of a, I guess, of an increase had it been being taken off in smaller chunks, but like has been mentioned before, that hasn't been done. And and we've gotten ourselves to this critical mass situation again where it's like, okay, now we we've got to do something about it. And I I feel that that is that what we've proposed is prudent and responsible.
I wanted to first say that when you say budget retreat, it sounds like we had fun and we went somewhere.
We went to the fire station and talked all day.
We sat in the in the fire station in in their training room and talked all day. So that's what a retreat is for us. Just so you don't question where the funding is going. And I I I concur with what we've heard here tonight. And I agree with so many of the issues that we brought up. I have, I have aged parents who live with me. And because of the very situation that we we all find ourselves in and we compensate for them because because of a lot of reasons and and we try to help them. And so I I understand the impact that all of this has. But I also received a call from somebody who said, I shouldn't have to pay for ambulance because I don't use the ambulance and paramedics. And I thought that is incredibly short sighted and nonsense because that is the point of emergency services that you never know when you'll need them. But they must be in the best working order with the best staff possible. And that is one of the only things. One of the few things that a city municipality can do very well, and that is to take care of the 30 something thousand people rather than just thinking in terms of the one family. And that's one of the things that we're charged with. And somebody else said, is anything that I say tonight, it's not going to change your mind. And I would return that question. Because after hearing and seeing the presentation and recognizing where this money is going, I would hope that some minds have been changed about where this money goes and what it's needed for and whether we're being careful with our the charge that we have to take care of these funds. This is a, this is a heavy burden and it is not something that we take lightly. And and I don't think anybody up here has ever been cavalier about any of the things that we spend or how we spend it. You heard also that somebody that a letter was read right at the beginning that said, you didn't give us any money for the for the museum. We wanted to give money to that museum. And and you see that that now there they have to work with with little to nothing. And we're going to try and find ways to to compensate for that. And maybe they can sell some things that will help to to compensate for what they're running, what the costs are to run that. But but there are a lot of those situations that we can't address. We wish we could. So having looked over this, knowing that every one of these issues, we have faced huge issues that have been a concern to the public over the last year especially that are the reason why we chose these these areas to put the money. And and I don't see where they can be cut. So I I think that we have really worked hard to whittle this down.
I want to give some time to Councilman Savage who's online.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, let me state, I feel for everyone. I I know as a, you know, we're residents as well. I I know that there are belts being tightened all over. Inflation sucks. And at the same time, inflation is being felt by everyone. All the citizens, by the city, it costs more to do anything. It doesn't, I can't. We can't lay pavement for the same price. We can't build buildings for the same price we could just a year ago. And and I totally get it. Just know that, just like the rest of them, I have gone through this budget line by line trying to find places that we can cut or or not fund things. Again, as brought up, that there's several items that we probably need to do or would like to do that we can't do right now because we're trying to be as conservative as possible. At the same time, just a few months ago, I was being called out and and yelled at because I wasn't paying enough for our city employees. And now we're we're getting the same thing for not paying them enough. Or sorry, for for paying them too much. So there is always both sides of all these issues. There are those that would prefer that we are paying them a lot more. As you heard, one of the the proposals was actually to increase the wages of everyone by a larger percentage. And again, all these opinions, opinions are are great, they're valid, and we weighed everything we could to try and make sure that we could both provide for the the public good, provide for the safety of the citizens, provide the services while trying not to get any of you in a situation where you have to leave. We we love every single one of you. We're happy you're here in Syracuse. You're part of the reason we are getting all of these different awards. Like, like was pointed out, no one moved here because Jordan Savage is on city council. None of you even cared. You moved here because this is just a great place to live. And as a city council, it's our responsibility to make sure it stays that way. If we don't adequately staff all of these departments, what we have is we have roads falling apart, we have parks falling into disrepair. And if you, again, we had a recommendation today to just get rid of parks. It's not a city responsibility. I would argue that people move here because we have great parks. Businesses come here because it's a nice place to live. If we neglect these items and things start to look rundown, people don't move here and businesses don't come here. So it's a balance act between doing the best you can with the resources you have and or cutting back and letting some things wait a little bit longer. And so it's kind of being balanced. I I I appreciate all of you for coming out. I I have thought about a lot of the things you guys have been mentioning. I I've looked over all of this. At the end of the day, it comes down to a simple fact that I cannot run this city like the federal government. I I can't just go out and do the politically smart thing to do is say no taxes. And good news, it's a tax break for everyone. Because that would be fiscally irresponsible to both the city and to each one of you, because at some point the piper comes calling. We can't just continually extend debt forever. So given all of that, I I think I've done the best I can. If it's not good enough for some of you, I apologize. But at the end of the day, I've done everything I can to make sure that I've kept the costs low and have provide the best possible service we can. And this is how I see us moving forward on that path. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Jen?
What was your thought?
I I think that there I think there are a lot of, the majority of this, as I said earlier, are things that are unavoidable. We began this year kind of in crisis because we had so many police officers leaving to higher paying jobs that we were struggling to put a full qualified staff on out there to serve you. And there was great public outcry saying, pay them more, pay them what they're getting paid in other cities to keep them here. I want to comment that one thing that I could say that we had was probably the highest quality police force. You know, man by man that I've seen in any of the cities that I've visited or worked with. We have an amazing staff and we were on the verge of starting a massive turnover because we couldn't afford and we couldn't get officers. So we did raise their pay. And that's part of, you know, you can't raise their pay just for six months. We have to do it going forward and that's part of what's in this. The very large part of this is paramedic services. I'm so glad that we have it here in our city because the alternative is that we would be dependent on it coming to our city and paying for some other city to run the program. And I don't think they can run it better. And I applaud Chief Bington for the way that he's deployed the service. I, when it went live in April, I was nothing but proud of what we had to offer the community that it was a better service than they were getting before. And I may take some flak from the county on that, but I will say I'm more excited about what we have here. And I feel great about that for our citizens. Could I find things in this budget that I would cut? Yeah, I I think that we've done without a communications person for many, many years. I would leave that out. I would put that in if we could afford it in the future. Could we cut back anywhere else of what's in this tax increase? I'm not sure we can. Not and continue to have staff that will fulfill the positions that we have. And we have had it's not just the turnover, it's the service that people expect. There is, I've had hundreds of phone calls over the last three or four weeks. And it is, I mean, literally, I'm getting them all points of date of the day. I was driving to Salt Lake with Robert to go to a meeting and I was getting phone calls. I mean, it's constant, it's nonstop. I have to not take every call because I have a a job that is not being mayor. Mayor is my second job because we all could not survive on what, you know, we are compensated for our time here. So anyway, but I do call people back if you leave me a message. But I guess the point is, is that we have gotten pretty lean. Do I agree 100%? Not quite, but close enough because if we were to take one position out, would it really change the change for everybody? It's probably not big enough that it does. But it is a tough task. You know, people say, well, just don't raise it because we're all dealing with inflation. But if we don't deal with the inflation the city faces, that means we have to give less. Means, you know, I I can't actually fix your roads. I can't actually provide full shifts of first responders and I'm proud of the services that we have. I'm very proud of of those men and women that serve in those positions. And it's not just police and and fire. I mean, you need to recognize that when you flush the toilet, you want that stuff to go away. And if I don't have first responders for the utilities, you could have a physician where it comes back and that's something a lot of people take for granted is that we have water workers and environmental workers that make it so that this is livable and the sanitation is part of our city and it is a real thing. So I applaud all of those men and women who serve us in that way and I'm that's where I stand on this. So I, again, I open it to any further discussion from any council member. If not, we'll have to take a motion and move forward.
So I I move that we approve proposed resolution R 2022, R 2230, setting the certified tax rate and adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in, let's, this is major finance. I'm going to ask Cassie do a roll call vote on this.
Councilmember Carver?
Aye.
Councilmember Bingham?
Aye.
Councilmember Teague?
Aye.
Councilmember Watson?
Aye.
Councilmember Savage?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. At this point, I will adjourn us from our public hearing and I will set us in recess for until nine o'clock to begin our regularly scheduled meeting.
Hey, did you guys notice that the paramedic truck has a different sound than the rest of us? It does. It sounds so different. It does, it sounds so different.
I realize that was a very long meeting and I appreciate those who endured through that. It I think it was needed that we heard from everyone, so I hope that that's appreciated. I will say that I listened to everyone. So I think that they were all heard and it was noted. And I don't think that it was a waste of time for anyone. So to begin with, we have, oh, I need a motion to adopt the agenda for our regular
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our first item on the agenda, we have an request, a request to be on the agenda from the Brent Taylor Foundation. Is that person here?
Mayor, I don't see them here. So I can reach out and see if they want to reschedule that. But I know that their event is obviously
Yeah, it's coming up. So
I'll see if they want to come to the work session at the end of the month.
Sorry. Next, we would like to turn over time to Chief Beington to recognize firefighter Cody Purser.
Council, Mayor, thank you. Fire Officer Designation Program, State of Utah, began in 2014. One of the purposes of this program was to identify and credential firefighters in the state who have prepared themselves for supervisory roles in the fire service. As of August 1st of this year, and out of thousands of firefighters across the state, there have only been 108 supervisory fire officer designations awarded. I'm proud to announce that a total of 10 Syracuse firefighters, the combination of both part-time and full-time, have received this designation. And tonight, we're going to recognize number 11. So firefighter Kobe Purser has been awarded the Utah Supervisory Fire Officer Designation as outlined by the International Association of Fire Chiefs and adopted by the Utah Commission on Fire Officer Designation. Firefighter Purser has combined hundreds of hours of training, education, and experience to meet the requirements for this designation. His hard work and commitment to this process shows his dedication to the Utah State Fire Service and his commitment to the City of Syracuse and our department. They've sent a nice certificate that's framed and pinned here on the back. And so tonight, please join me in congratulating firefighter Purser for attaining this designation.
Thank you. We are very proud to have 11 of those 108, maybe now 109. That is, that is a huge for our city and very proud of you. I'd now like to open it up to public comment. This would be on any item that is not on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. We now have two motions of minutes that we need to go over and approve.
I always wait for Seth on this one. I feel like I missed something. He reads them verbatim.
I did, but I didn't catch anything. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second, motion to approve, motion to approve and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving forward, we have two items with common consent. One is proposed ordinance, item 2022-19, amending section 3-10-80 of the Syracuse City Code pertaining to scope of the Planning Commission. This was discussed in a previous work session. And a reappointment, because this is a reappointment of a currently serving Arts Council position, this, I didn't give a memo on this. I'll take
So I I move that we approve proposed ordinance 2022-19 as well as 20, R 2232. Do I need?
No.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will just make a quick comment that that was wonderful for Ms. Fawcett, who has just been elected to be next year's Chair of the Arts Council. So it's a good thing we reappointed her. And she'll serve great. Next item, number six, consideration of development agreement governing HCA Syracuse Mixed Use Property Project at 2000 West and SR 193. There was some legal discussion about this that you're all privy to. Is there anything that needs to be brought forward at this time? I'll take a motion.
I'm trying to get the number here. Yeah, so I I move that we approve the DA for the HCA project. Is that?
Yeah, just a motion to approve the amendment to the
The amended DA. Is that adequate over there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Which covers the 800,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Proposed item number, ordinance 2022-20, amending Syracuse City Code, Section 4-25-130 regarding secondary water violation citation amounts. Okay. Just in the interest of time, I'm just going to say that this is just to make them concurrent, that we had a separation from documents and we just want to make them agree.
Right. I agree with this. This is One thing I would, sorry.
Go ahead, Jordan.
Go ahead. One thing I would like to see in the future is I would like to see these fines be reflective of the drought conditions. I I don't want to be too punitive in years where I I realize we we never want to waste water, but as we go into extreme, I think these are viable. But I do think there should be some course that in conditions where things aren't quite as bad, that they're not quite as punitive. So something for a future agenda. But I think as it is right now, this is just housekeeping and we can go ahead. I can go ahead and recommend that we approve that.
So basically, you would suggest that we we discuss it or maybe bring it up for discussion every year, dependent and then?
No, I I think what we should do is create a tiering that says, hey, if you're in extreme drought or extreme or exceptionally drought, you have these sets. If you have mild or moderate, it's it's these tiers. Just because I I don't think we need to be as punitive in in good water years.
I don't want to spend too much time because it's not on the agenda, but I will market
Agree.
Your future consideration to discuss a drought condition modification.
Second question I had, and it's just maybe because I didn't attend the planet, the work session where we discuss this a little bit more in detail. But I was just wondering from from Paul's perspective, you know, is it, does it make sense to say these these violations are these penal penalties come into line when you've been found to be wasting water versus when you've violated the regulations that have been put forth? And it just seems like kind of vague to say when you've been wasting water because that's pretty interpretive.
So so the the way that you waste water is enumerated in the the ordinance. There's there's several kind of specific ways that you waste water and that can happen any year. Even if there's not a resolution with restrictions on watering days. So violating the resolution is one of those ways. But there's other ways, like if you're allowing water to pool in the road in front of your house, or if you're flooding your neighbors and things, those are, those are the things that were, or if you know that there's a leak and you're not fixing it. Those, those are always applicable. So if, yeah, if you wanted to have it be you know, waste of water, have one fee and then have violation of our watering restrictions be a separate fee, that's another option.
No, I was just thinking more in line with, so is that a term that has a definition, water waste? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. In our code, we we say, you know, water waste is is
It's equivalent.
Accomplished the following ways. Give me the several ways.
And that's the question I would have asked last, last week. So, okay, that's perfect. I just thought it sounded a little vague in this specific 4.25, whatever it is. So, perfect.
Can I get a motion?
Did we need Robert to say anything?
Mr. Robert, you're killing it, man. He's just got it all locked.
Sorry, I'm trying to streamline things since we've been here for three hours.
Okay, I I move that we approve the proposed, no, eight, okay. Proposed resolution R 2231, amending the Syracuse City Consolidated Fee Schedule regarding secondary
You're on the next one.
Nope, sorry. It was seven. I was, oh, sorry, jumped. Okay. Regarding, okay, I move that we approve proposed ordinance 2022-20, amending Syracuse City Code, Section 4.25.130 regarding secondary water violation citation amounts.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Next item is a public hearing for proposed resolution 22-31, amending the Syracuse City Co, or City Consolidated Fee Schedule. Is this you, Robert? Okay.
Um, Steve. This is really just in, as a result of the
The last one.
Item number seven, it's just placing it in the consolidated fee schedule. So it's in just one place rather than finding it in a resolution or in the ordinance. Now it's just in one spot where all of our fees are listed.
Agreed. Was there anything else tied to this, Steve? Okay. So this is, all right, I love that correction. Any further discussion? I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve proposed resolution R 2231.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, authorization, authorized execution of a real estate purchase contract of property located approximately 975 West, 2920 South, more commonly known as the Walnut Grove Detention Basin. Noah? This is pretty
Any questions?
Addatory.
The family that's buying that, that uses that anyway, they're right, buying it.
Yeah, they're going to build, they're going to build a new house and they'll just be like a side yard.
Yeah, pretty, pretty straightforward.
I'll take a motion if there's no more discussion.
I so move that we approve ordinance 2218, amending
This is
Wrong one.
It's just authorized the
Oh, yeah, that we authorize the execution of a real estate purchase contract property located approximately 975 West, 2920 South, and more commonly known as the Walnut Grove Detention Basin property.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Item number 10, proposed ordinance 2022-18, amending section 3.60.40 of the city code related to organization of Syracuse Youth Council. This item, I will say that we have just discussed in great depth. I have met with the the intent of this was that this is a volunteer position, but researching how this is done as a volunteer position.
Dave, this is the youth council.
Oh, youth, I'm sorry. I'm I'm one ahead.
We're all ahead tonight.
We are all guilty. Okay, sorry.
I mean
Counsel, this has been outlined in your packet and agreed to in general in a work session. Does anybody have any more discussion?
No. Maybe Seth does.
Well, the only
Yes, Seth wasn't there.
And we've decided for you.
Well, I don't know. Jordan, were you going to say something?
No, I was just saying, I agree with Lisa. Since you weren't there and this is actually your quote unquote jurisdiction, I would love to hear your thoughts on what we did in your absence.
Yeah, no, Cassie and I met after and kind of went over what what occurred and and what's outlined in the packet is is everything I could hope and dream for.
Great.
And so it's, yeah, I think we're good.
So would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve, let's see, so don't mess it up. Okay, proposal is 2022-18.
No, this is, oh, yeah, 2022-18, okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, they were all ayes. Motion or passes unanimously.
Number 11. Number 11 is what you're.
Now, number 11 was the action regarding adjustments to the Youth Court Administration. And in the Youth Court Administration, it's been discussed that this has really become an extension of the court itself and that this is probably not best handled as a, you, as an after-hours volunteer organization, even though it takes place after hours and it does involve youth. It's probably more akin to the way that we handle things like our rec program, where someone actually is paid in staff to manage the program, but in fact, it is managing a bunch of volunteer participants and even volunteer coaches.
So can I add something to that? We did discuss this earlier and we were given some incorrect information about all the other positions across the area being unpaid. They actually are paid positions.
Yeah, I think there's some discrepancy in what was constituting staff and what was constituting the after-hours volunteer. And so considering all of that, I've realigned my position that we probably need were this to fail in our city and not continue because the program has grown so successfully. And I do appreciate those volunteers who have contributed over the years and helped this grow to be an alternative to prosecution, which is where a lot of the hours would fall if we didn't administer this. So this change would move it from a auxiliary council supervised to a staff-supervised organization.
I support this. I think this is a good resolve to what's been going on and to help.
We're referring to option two, is that?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And I want to thank you, Lori, for incredible service all these years. You've just done amazing things and the fact that it's growing and not dissipating and falling to pieces under your tutelage is wonderful. So thank you.
And thank you for not just leaving us, like, thank you. Cause I know the last time we talked about this, it seemed like that it just, that we just wanted to leave that way and bringing more information to, thank you for not just saying bye.
And even though I was unable to meet with you, there was a lot of research on the backend that supported where we are today.
Yeah.
So.
If I may?
You may.
I'll say I also put in some research and talked to several people, including one of the participants on the Youth Court.
Imagine.
And my daughter. And talked to her and I actually asked her specifically about how things were being run, if she thought that it was doing well. And she just could not stop talking about how amazing you do and how well you organize this and keep things moving forward. And also she loved how much good that this organization does. And so I, I think based on all of the liver recommendations I have, this is a pretty easy choice.
So before we take a motion, I'm going to clarify just a couple of points because I think that this is important. This would become a hired position within the city. So as such, there is no question that you are the most qualified candidate that we can think of, but technically there will be a hiring process. So having 10 years' experience with our Youth Court, I think, makes you far and away the best candidate that we probably will see.
Is that true if it's a contract?
It's a contract, Dana.
Contract is still hired, though. So we're not asked, looking for other options, but it does technically have to be.
Be a hired.
A hire, yeah, it has to be awarded. So it's not, we can't, yeah, anyway, so.
Were you gonna say?
Well, would it be like bids, like we did?
No.
Oh, it's Steve.
No, we can, it's a low enough volume that we can award it to a obvious. It's just that it's not done in advance. This is not a decision made in advance. We actually have to make that decision, but staff can authorize.
We're deciding on whether we're going to do a contract.
So, yeah, but based on our policy, anything less than 10,000, the award can be just.
Can just be made by the.
Bid.
Right.
But even with that, I, I would like to consider, we have some things to offset costs. I know that this is not a huge cost, but I do think it's not unreasonable to talk to West Point, since they also benefit, to look at some of these offsets that we've outlined in the packet.
Okay, so let me comment on that because we did some research into this and we already have a contract with West Point that incur a percentage of our actual cost. So whatever becomes an actual cost, they will be responsible for contributing to.
Like a contract.
Right.
So can I clarify that too? Cause I put 50/50 in the packet, but it is a pro-rated amount based on number of youth advisors from West Point versus us.
Okay.
So it would have been a 38 to 62% split for Syracuse. Syracuse would have 62% of the cost.
And there's one other point that I want to clarify, and that is just simply this, that there's been some debate internally in the city as to where this falls, whether it falls under the attorney or the courts. Because the city, or the city manager has some discretion to move personnel appropriately, accordingly, I'm going to leave it there and say that it's not council, not up to us to decide where you place people in departments.
Yeah, I mean, on its face right now, probably looking at somewhere in, in the courts or, you know, if it's a contract, you know, it's mainly just contract administration and, and tech, you know, tech support, things like that.
But based on the idea that you could move employees in another department to a different department without council making that authorization, I'm thinking that this is.
There'd be a budgetary impact probably doing that. So there would be some, some council involvement with, if I'm actually moving employees.
So does that mean that we would have to now authorize this for a contract to be administered by a particular department?
We would probably, maybe in the next budget amendment.
Okay.
We would, we would handle it that way and, and put it in the budget where.
We can't just handle that with authorizing it? In this motion to authorize?
Isn't that option three?
I think we can just do, we can move forward, but as far as like having it outlined in the budget, I don't know, Stevie, if you want to correct me, we would just make an amendment later.
Yeah, we have budget dollars to run the Youth Court right now, sitting there. I would recommend authorizing to move forward with this contract and then we come back with a budget opening to put the full amount back in.
So based on that, I need a motion that authorizes us to execute.
I so move that we move forward with authorizing this contract.
Second.
Option two. Option two.
Moved and seconded as option two, as outlined in the packet. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. And thank you for all your service.
Thank you, Ms. Lori.
Okay, item number 12, discussion regarding status of crossing guard employment positions and options for filling vacancies. Chief Atkins.
So counsel, I just, as I indicated in this factual summation, I'm not really looking for a vote necessarily from you tonight on action. I just really feel like you needed to know about this information. We are in such a rough situation with our crossing guards now that I needed you to see what we've done and give you some ideas on discussion for what we do going forward with the situation we're in. I have to tell you that as we've been in this meeting, we had another one resign. So we're down nine now. And if you were to look on our grid that I gave you in your packet, or excuse me, your, your table, I was incorrect on the location at 2000 West and 1700 South. We technically have none at that location. And then the one at 1525 West and 700 South would have been the resignation this evening. So.
Mandatory section.
Yeah. So you can see that's getting, that's getting pretty rough in those circumstances. As I said in this memo, in just the stats that we took in roughly a four-year time period of the last school year, we had sworn officers covering those positions 143 times, each one of those taking about an hour and a half each time. And when we were doing that, we weren't as bad off in our crossing guard staffing as we are right now. So that's kind of why I'm looking at this and saying, I need to give you some ideas maybe for discussion on what we can do with this. The legal requirements on this, as I listed, is basically that we're required to provide a crossing guard for any reduced speed school zone. We have four of those within our city. The location is on there. So when you look at our triage list, those four go to the top because we're legally required to do it. The next grouping that you look at would be what I would say are high-risk positions. And this is mostly due to width of the road and the speed that's on the road. There are also a couple where due to the traffic in, it's just particular to some of the areas in the school, these two would be close to Cook and then one over by Bluff Ridge, where the kids and the traffic all seem to arrive at exactly the same time. And if you take time to cross those kids in your normal L fashion, you back up traffic for a long time in the morning. And so many years ago, what we did was we ended up crossing the kids diagonally across that intersection, which gets them across faster and actually clears the traffic out quicker. Those two make my high-risk list because I feel like we may have been to a point where we've built that pattern into the kids now. The ones, the four or five of them on the bottom there, I'm not saying that they're not positions we want to fill because we certainly do, but between what we're required to do and the areas on the high-risk list due to road size and speed, it's really just a matter of saying, what are we going to be able to get by without? And school starting within two weeks, one of my concerns is, and I know Brody shares this as well, is if we start the year with a crossing guard there, we're kind of creating this expectation that the crossing guard will be there, which means that's likely when we're going to have to backfill versus just being able to get information out to the school as soon as we can that says, we may not be able to staff your positions this year. So anyway, triaging was kind of the first idea that I had on this. What I will say could be an unintended consequence of it is a lot of these crossing guards like where they're at. And so when we say, hey, we're going to have to start moving people, it's possible that you could have other crossing guards quit simply because they don't want to move locations.
Might be tied to their own children.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or they've been there long enough that they know so many of the kids. Yeah, that's, that's a possibility, but you know, I mean, it, it really can't turn to blind eye to the need that we have either. The job sharing, I mean, it, you know, if we had ones in our list right now, mostly our, what I call our sub-crossing guards, okay? So if we had some of those who were interested in doing it, we'd certainly let that happen, but as of now, we don't have any that are interested in being a part of that. So they just want to be able to fill in when they get called upon.
I got Sergeant Carter. Come on, man, didn't we talk about this? I got my vest, my GoPro and my air horn ready. And I know you can't throw signs at the car. What's going on?
One down. So one of the things that I would implore counsel do, we all, we, all of you have assignments to work with different elementary schools. I would ask that you go to those schools before school starts and just see if they can't help you find interest from people who have an investment there in their own children and might consider taking on this position because it's more of a safety issue than it is a job opportunity. It's, it's a providing safety for kids. And we're going to have to find, I don't think there's any, you know, Chief Atkins said to me on the phone when we talked about the, bringing this to council. I don't know that we can pay enough to make people want this as a job. It's a very short time in the day. It's not a lot of money and there are limits to what we can afford to pay people. We can't pay them full-time wages to be there for three hours a day. So we're going to need to do some legwork as a council to try and provide some safety. We're going to have to.
Can, can I be, like, I feel like, I don't want to be really blunt, okay? So bear with me. I feel like we're marketing it in the wrong way because it's like, we want people to come out. No disrespect, Mr. Brody, but I felt like that was a manipulation tactic of a marketing style that the email that was sent out.
No offense taken.
I feel like we need to direct it more towards the straightforward what it is. Like we need some overbearing, like helicopter moms, pilot moms. Are, seriously, I'm one of those. It's, and that's what it is. I would do great in one of those roles. And if we could find more available parents that are kind of like that, I think they would have a great time.
I think it's also something great you could suggest for grandparents because, but I think that that would be, I'm surprised that you don't have more people interested in job sharing because I could do a morning just fine, but I can't know what time I'll be back in the day. So I, I wonder if we can, so if we go forward and we try as a council to talk to our community connections, can we suggest that they can do a, a job share?
I, I would say that it would be certainly something we would consider with it. I mean, if I have to, you know, try and my best to deploy an officer to one position in the afternoon, it's certainly better than trying to do it to both.
Yeah.
You know, wait, the new posting that we were going to try and do for this, you know, we can, I mean, we can try and ratchet it up and make it look fancy and, you know, these people. But I mean, plain and simple, we haven't received any feedback or any real response to any of the Facebook posts we've put out in the past. So I don't, I don't harbor any high hopes that we're going to see anything come simply from doing what we've already been doing.
Do we have any like flyers that we could post at the schools or?
I think that would be fair to say we could maybe produce something that we could take to the schools and try to, try to promote this in other ways. But again, that's where I come back to, somebody's going to have to make a visit to every school, I think.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe specifically the community councils of those schools.
Yeah.
Agree. Well, one thing I would request is, is there a list that actually identifies which schools, these specific crossing service? I'm sure I could go through and figure it all out by cross elementary school boundaries with addresses and.
Sure we could produce.
That's why I'm saying if we had a flyer that said we need crossing guards at these locations specific for each school.
Yeah, I, I think you could actually get a lot more traction with that.
Which school are you tied to? That one needs.
No, yeah, I, we can definitely add another column to let you just know what school that's primarily responsible for.
I was 100% serious, Sergeant Carter. I would love to volunteer if you would. And, and that 1700, 3000 cost walk was right by my house. I'd be happy to help until you guys.
I'm a little nervous, Sergeant Carter.
Oh, come on. You know, make me black, right? It's fine.
The influence on our kids.
I can control my vernacular.
What are the requirements really quick? What time do they start? What time do they end?
I, I mean, it's, it's a little bit difficult to tell you that because every crossing is a little bit different depending on when the school starts. I would say, well, most of them, Ryan, are probably in by.
Are they all elementaries or are they?
So most of them are going to be near the elementaries. The only one that really shares an elementary and the junior high is obviously the Hawk. But again, part of the problem with that one is you have, depending on which side of the road the kids live on, they don't necessarily follow the school's exact SNAP plan to get them to the, the elementary school. They'll, they'll just walk on the west side of the road all the way across until they get to the Hawk and then cross for the school, when the SNAP plan would actually be for them to cross east on, at the intersection of Antelope and 2000 and then cross by CVS. That's, that's how that plan's designed. So technically that intersection is only supposed to be crossing in two directions for school, but we end up doing it in all four directions. So just because you have kids coming up to all four points.
Yeah.
So that would be the only one that was really tied, I would say, to the, to the junior high. The Arts Academy is just a byproduct of the fact that they have a ju, a junior high sitting on the exact same campus. So.
So mayor and, and council, so what, you know, we're, we're in early August. School starts in a few weeks. What we wanted to make sure is if we don't have enough, we want to deploy what we do have to the most critical locations and the others would be vacant. And then if we do get, and then if we do get crossing guards, it's a, it's a, it's a bonus. What we don't want to do is fit, you know, have a crossing guard there. And then, you know, they're, they're not there the, the next week or the next month.
I am worried about the situation where some people may say they're willing to be at one particular place, but might not be willing to go somewhere else because at least one, I don't think they're a guard anymore, but at least one of the guards that I noticed out lived a few houses from one of the intersections. And so they were walking there and if you were to tell them, we need you across town, I'm not sure they'd get in their car and go, you know? And I'm not sure that person's a crossing guard anymore. I'm just saying that that's a consideration.
I think that's what he was talking about.
Rather have one than not have one because we need them at a different spot.
Well, again, I mean, it's. Well, again, I mean, it's, it, I agree with you, mayor. I mean, I don't want to put somebody through that spot either, but when we're legally bound to four of them, and I've only got two of those staffs so far. Uh, I mean, I, I don't have much of a choice on what we're gonna do with that. Uh, we're, you know, we may just have to ask for volunteers and tell them, look, you know, if and when we get this done, I mean, we will look to hire somebody for that spot and we'll send you back to yours as soon as we can.
Yeah.
And that should be part of our discussion when we are talking with, with, uh, the, the schools to let them know that it's not like we're asking you to serve your school specifically. It's, we need the position critically across multiple locations, some severely high-risk and mandatory areas. That's all we can do.
Yeah, so, uh, the Arts Academy starts next week. And the other schools would be the week following, so, um, I, I think we're really to the point where we kind of need to give those schools that are gonna be in next week, the heads up that, hey, we may not have someone there for you.
Yeah.
Um, and easily by, you know, the end of next week to the other schools.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So if push comes to shove, we can use manipulation now, right?
Yeah.
What you gotta do.
If you got it, my man.
So basically what we're seeing is all of the council is gonna go talk to their schools that we're in a liaison position with and put it on social media on your own personal thing if you can. That's what I'm gonna do. And then we can say that we, that you're open to job sharing.
I will, uh, I'll have office staff start working on a flyer and then maybe a general posting for you tomorrow that we'd hopefully be able to share for you by end of day.
And then we have to return and report that we've done this assignment. And if we haven't.
It will be flogging.
Okay. We'll be acting as crossing.
I'm gonna get an A on this one.
Counsel, any more, any more questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, item number 13 is public comments. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Seeing none, we will move on to mayor and council announcements. I'm gonna start down here with you, Jen.
Um, so there's a new kind of mosquito out, turns out, a Colax ta sara lawis, and you will see it when it lands on you because it's got a white line above the ankle joint and a white line below it. It is a heavy carrier of, uh, wait a minute, what the heck's that called?
West Nile.
West Nile, thank you. So, um, and it comes out about 30 minutes before sunset and then kind of goes back in and then after sunset, about 30 minutes after, they come out really heavy. So be aware of those things. Uh, I got to see something really cool whenever we had a farm fire down in southwest side of Syracuse. The fire department actually, uh, Hill Air Force Base has a trailer that they bring out for firefighters and it's like the refresh, replenish or reflect, refresh?
Rehab.
Rehab trailer. And I wasn't sure what it was at first, so I went and talked to him about it and they literally come out just to specifically take care of our firefighters to keep them rehydrated and give them snacks and cycle them out through fires and stuff so they don't overheat. And I just want to share you that with you guys. That was the first time I saw it and I thought it was fricking amazing.
Very cool.
That's all I got.
Okay. Um, hey, I would like to talk about it, it on a future agenda, talk about the museum, um, funding. Is that anything we can address? And then also just a reminder that Illumination is coming up the last day of August. It's a Wednesday. It's at our Founder's Park. It's a huge event. Tell all the, your friends and neighbors about it. It's about wellness and we're having some great singers and, and performers and a great speaker. Um, so anyway, if you see any, if, like, if I post it, if you can share it, um, I'll be posting a couple more times this week, but it, it's, it's great that we're hosting it and we, you know, we're sponsoring it as well. So I'd love to see it increase every year and we've had some really good, uh, we've been on television and radio as well. So we should have a good, a good turnout. And thank you Cresta and the Parks Department for all the work you're about to do.
Thank you in advance. So, um, so they canceled the CTC meeting last month. Um, so we have another one on Monday. I'll report that, uh, next, next time we meet, uh, as far as if there's any new updates there. On the youth council, the only item I didn't, we didn't address, or at least I don't know, is the plan, the implementation plan for advertising on those positions. Did we, did, did that get discussed in the last work session? As far as like, are we putting it in connect, you know, connections? Are we putting it in? Or do we have assignments to go talk to the high schools for the liaisons?
Yeah, we, we, it was in the, it was in the pack and I think we briefly discussed just, uh, using any, you know, any of the means for the cities for advertising.
Um, but that would be the, I mean, so the liaisons with the.
But yeah, uh, that's gonna, that's gonna be critical is having that one-on-one with like counselors or.
I think we need to like decide a date when we're going to pull the ripcord on when we need to at least get information back from the schools. Otherwise, you know, telling them that we're looking for folks is not gonna likely yield any, any, I, I've had three kids reach out to me, probably because of Lisa. Yeah, yeah. So, um, but other than that, I don't know what the strategy is gonna be. Should we create a flyer that, that talks about what information's on there? Do you want me to, you know, create a?
Well, um, why don't you give us a couple of days to put some ideas together? Um, you know, and staff, we'll get, we'll get in touch with you. Um, and put a.
Yeah, if there's anything I can do, let me know. I'm, I'm, uh, pretty good with, uh, nothing, but, um, I can help.
He's trainable.
Oh, um, with planning commission, so Commissioner Halliwell, who's the, the new chair, he is, one of the things he wants to do, and I said, you know, I, I didn't think there was any real objection from us, but he, um, one of the things he wants to do is, and he said, you know, they used to do this as a, a commission quite frequently, but kind of haven't done it in, in recent years, but like, he, he wants to review certain codes and things like that and give recommendations if they're seeing something where they're the land use authority. So for example, like on the, on the mixed use zone, mixed use zone that we've been revamping, um, they gave certain recommendations based on on them, you know, their recommendation was to limit it to city center and then, um, other recommendations that they gave were based on us accepting that, but we chose not to accept that. So he's taking another look at it and saying, okay, now knowing what council is thinking, let us give you, we'll take another look at it and see if we see anything that might be helpful. So I, I, I didn't discourage him from doing that. And I said, I think more collaboration is probably better than, than not. So he, he'll, he'll probably be doing that more frequently, so.
Um, I will reflect that when I started on council, the planning commission was giving themselves their own mission statement to revamp city code and send it to council regularly. In fact, their goal was to redo every section of city code with one year. And I think we kind of had to pull back and say, wait a minute. Council usually initiates a need for change.
Okay.
This is not a mission statement per se of the planning commission to say, we expect you to change the city code.
I didn't, I didn't get that from him, but I'll, I'll chat with him and.
That's the caution is that it really should be initiated of, we'd like to review rather than, uh, because there was a time when, this has got to be Jordan, you, you having a drink there, bud? So, uh, uh, but you know, there was, there was like, uh, particular planning commissioner who's not here anymore, but he was like, yeah, my goal is to have this section rewritten for council by such and such day. And I'm like, that went too far.
Yeah.
That, that was.
I'll reiterate that caution to him.
Yeah, so this is, um, they're welcome to bring something forward that comes to their attention.
I, I think it's more in that light, like, hey, if they're reviewing something under their purview and they're like, oh, this might be helpful for council.
And they could.
We might make a recommendation and say, do you guys want to review this?
But it's not a mission of.
Yeah, no. And then it would be up to us if we want to address that, yeah.
Okay, so that's all I'm saying with that caution.
Yeah.
Uh, Jordan.
Uh, for the record, that was me just tearing a page out of a notebook. I was taking notes in. It's apology. I didn't know it was so loud.
I do another noise and we'll guess it.
I imagine he was eating a saltwater taffy.
There you go. This is exciting. Yeah, I'll, I'll try another, I was kidding. Um, so Waste Management, uh, did not meet, uh, last month. Our next meeting is in a couple of weeks, so um, I don't have anything new to report. Uh, I will be, as been mentioned, I've, I, I'll be reaching out to the new principal at Syracuse Elementary to try and, uh, make sure they are aware of the needs we're gonna have for the crossing guards. And I do think this is a, a good thing to try and, uh, have the schools help promote this as well because this plays directly into their safety plans as well, so. Thank you.
So, um, I just want to mention that if you missed Shrek the Musical, you missed an event because that was done wonderfully. They did a great job, um, really enjoyable. Uh, they have auditions coming up this next month for Mary Poppins Jr., which will be held in the fall. Uh, that's their junior musical for kids under 17. Um, so that will be another fun one for people. Uh, they are discussing their season for next year and I will let you know when they decide on one because that will be in their next meeting as they decide their season for the following year. And, uh, with sewer board, I'm just telling you that I'm pushing them to make sure that they finally get 4,000 open sometime this year. Um, that's been closed for months and months and, uh, they have had, just to help you understand, they have had materials show up damaged or backordered for replacements. It's been really tough. Or, you know, you get the road torn up and then you realize that the product shows up damaged and they can't be used and that's, it's been a real difficult situation. Thank goodness it's not used as much as other roads in the city, so.
What's your farmer?
Uh, well, I know I use it. I live out there, but anyway. Okay, um, I would take a motion for us to move into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you all in closed session.